I'd like to call to order the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting of Tuesday, November 15th, 2016. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez, would you take role, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember McCoy?
Present.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña is absent, and Mayor Price?
And I am here. Item number four, request for continuances. There are none. Item five, special presentations. There are none. And it is time for public comments. And Ms. Rodriguez, if you'd announce public comments, please.
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comments, matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Two individuals have presented cards in pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker tonight will be Billy Martin, followed by Tom Hunt. Good evening, Mr. Martin.
My name is Billy Martin. I'm a Thousand Oaks lover, and I have a shirt to prove it now. Any rate, I'd like to first off thank, I mean congratulate Al Adam and Rob McCoy on their reelection, and also congratulate Ann on running a very tough race. And I have no regrets. I believe that I got my $2,900 worth with 5,000 votes, equalling 7 percent. And 7 percent is about the amount of sales tax in Thousand Oaks, and we all know how far that can go. At any rate, two days after the election on Thursday, November 10th, I ended my Jungle Land Tour exhibit. We had it at the library, and it was very well received. And then on Sunday, this past Sunday, we ended the, we closed the fifth and final year of the Canal Valley Film Festival. So it's time for me to come up with a new idea. And in only two, in only two years, we'll be back, or I won't be back, but people will be back on the trail with campaigning for the next seats. And so it seemed to me that it would be nice if we weren't all talking about the same issues that we were talking about this year. And for me, the top three issues, I believe, were the development of the Boulevard, affordable housing, and something for millennials to do, as well as being able to live here. And while I was campaigning, I came up with an idea that I'd like to call, I don't see the timer, but I'd like to call, oh, it's on here, I only got a minute left? Oh, boy. Okay, I'm calling it the South Side Solution. And what it is, is it's a solution for the Boulevard on the downtown. And instead of trying to straddle the Boulevard, you know, with an arch and all the complications and logistics of the Boulevard, and the north side of the Boulevard really has, except for Garden, Gardens of the World and Mastro's, has very little way to become pedestrian-friendly. What we do is, we keep the Boulevard as the border, and we move the whole downtown project to the south side of the freeway, coming off the lefts. And we start, we start with a Stone House kind of concept for the millennials in that country garden floral, right there at Erbs. We approve the Lupe's. We go to the far side where we've got the museum, figure out if we're going to do the museum, and if not, we relocate five businesses, and then we have a complete palette where we can have an entire downtown on that side of the freeway. I think it's an interesting concept, and I'd love to pursue it with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Tom Hunt?
Good evening. I'm Mayor Prince and council members. I'm here on behalf of the Los Robles Estates Homeowners Association. I'm losing my voice. And I just called, come up here to thank you for the speedy work that you did as far as cleaning up that area on Lynn Road that's right on the corner of the freeway entrance there. In the last two days, it was completely cleaned up. We had, you had a crew there that was just unbelievable. And it was a very big fire hazard, and we had about five indigent people living there. And they were cooking fires there and everything else. So I just want to thank you for the speedy way that you took care of it. I know everybody complains about things you don't do, so you really did a good job on this, and thank you. And congratulations to the incumbents that got reelected.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. And thanking, thank you for bringing to my attention what was going on there, because I wondered as I drove by there. Very good. Mr. Powers, any follow-up to the public comments?
No follow-up this evening, only thank the resident for coming down. Staff from Public Works did a great job on that cleanup effort.
Very well, we're on to item number seven, the consent calendar. What's the pleasure of the council? I see nothing. There we go. Mr. Adam?
Thank you for submitting our move the consent calendar.
Very good. Mr. Adam moves the consent calendar. Ms. Rodriguez, if you would prepare us for a vote, please. Vote, please.
The motion passes 5-0, and I have an ordinance title for you. Ordinance adding to Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, New Chapters One Building Code, Six Mechanical Code, Seven Residential Code, Eight Plumbing Code, Ten Electrical Wiring Code, Fourteen Uniform Solar Energy Code, Sixteen Green Building Standards Code, and Seventeen Existing Building Code of Title Eight relating to building division and adopting California Building Residential Green Building Standards, Mechanical, Plumbing, Electrical, and Existing Building Codes 2016 Edition, and Uniform Solar Energy Code 2015 Edition by reference and repealing existing Chapters One, Six, Seven, Eight, Ten, Fourteen, and Sixteen of Title Eight of Municipal Code, MCA 2016-70340, ordinance number 1624NS.
Thank you very much. Then we're moving right along here. We're on to item eight A, which is a department report on the Alliance for the Arts merger. And that will be presented by Barry McCombe, the Cultural Affairs Director, and I see Mr. John Adams up there, our Finance Director, and also Patrick Heer, Assistant City Attorney. So, gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, it's my privilege to present to you tonight a report detailing the terms and conditions of the Alliance for the Arts statutory merger into the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Foundation. This report represents the culmination of almost two years of discussions between the Alliance Foundation and the city. But before going into the details of the merger, first allow me to provide you with some brief background. The Civic Arts Plaza represents a multi-decade effort by the residents to build a civic auditorium to house community groups and host internationally renowned touring artists. Today, the venue is known as the Bank of America Performing Arts Center, and has hosted over 9,000 performances and attracted more than 5.8 million patrons since opening in 1994. Seventy percent of all performances and activities are presented by local organizations. The theaters are operated as a city enterprise fund known as the Theaters Fund, which means that the theaters do not receive funding from operations, or for operations, rather, from the city's general fund. In reality, the Theaters Fund operates like a private business. In addition to the income raised through user fees, the Theaters Fund must also rely upon contributed income generated from the TOCAP Endowment Fund and financial support from the Alliance for the Arts. The Alliance has served as the nonprofit fundraising arm of the theaters since the mid-1980s, and was initially tasked with raising $3 million to fund an operations endowment. In 1996, the Alliance increased its fundraising commitment to $15 million. At that time, the city and Alliance also entered into a formal public-private partnership that has been in place for the last 20 years. Today, the Alliance provides annual funding of $300,000 to the Theaters Fund, $150,000 to resident companies and local arts organizations utilizing the theaters, and $70,000 to fund arts education through the Alliance's Kids in the Arts Program. In order to ensure that national performing arts attractions and headline artists would be part of the programming at the theaters, in 1993, city council approved the formation of the nonprofit TOCAP Foundation to present in-house presentations. Currently, the foundation presents between 50 and 60 performances each year with a programming budget of approximately $2 million. Just this last week, the foundation presented performances by Ringo Starr and Dana Carvey. The foundation also holds the liquor license for the theaters and provides concession services at all performances. After several years of deficits, the city council formed the Ad Hoc Theaters Fund Budget Review Committee in 2013 with a mandate to balance the Theaters Fund budget by June 2016. In June 2014, city council adopted the committee's financial plan, which included reductions in fee waivers, increased levels of contributed income, and new sources of earned income. As a result of these actions, the Theaters Fund budget was successfully balanced a year early in June 2015. The plan also called for the city and Alliance to engage in discussions to develop strategies to strengthen their partnership. Per that recommendation, representatives from the city and Alliance began meeting in April 2015 with discussions focused on the changing operating environment and the financial challenges that were unique to each of the two entities. In light of these findings of the report, the committee was tasked with developing potential relationship scenarios that would adhere to five agreed-upon principles with a goal to redefine the partnership between the city and the Alliance. These guiding principles included honoring the founding donors of the Civic Arts Plaza, protecting the legacy of the Alliance, and maintaining the Civic Arts Plaza as a venue for resident companies and community organizations, sustaining the Theaters Enterprise Fund, preserving a relationship between the Alliance and the city, and securing the principle of both the TOCAP and Alliance Endowment and Investment Funds. So the committee reviewed eight potential relationship scenarios and determined that the combined strengths and economies of scale of the Alliance and the foundation would be better, would better serve the theaters and local arts community as a single entity. So in February 2015, the planning committee reached an agreement in concept for the Alliance to merge into the foundation through a statutory merger. Following initial approval by the Board of Directors of the two nonprofit entities, city council approved the merger in concept at its May 24th meeting. In addition, city council also approved a one-time contribution of $4 million to be placed into a restricted endowment fund to support the Theaters Fund contingent upon the final merger of the two entities. So the planning committee formed a transition team that was charged with developing a framework and timeline to combine the assets and programs of the Alliance and the foundation. The transition team established a projected effective date for the merger of January 3rd, 2017. To complete this task, the transition team also established a structure of transition committees, which included focusing on areas such as communication, finance and operations, fundraising, governments, legal programs, and support staff. Over 30 committee members were drawn from the transition team, Alliance and Foundation Boards, and city staff, with many of the members serving on more than one of the committees. The foundation also engaged an outside facilitator to work with the transition team on the development of a three-year strategic plan for the new entity. When completed, the plan will create an aligned vision for the new organization's programs and activities, and will establish a clear work plan with policies, strategies, tactics, and benchmarks. Over the next few slides, I'm going to detail the legal and financial structure, as well as the programmatic activities of the new entity. So the Alliance will merge into the foundation through a statutory merger, which is the most cost-effective and timely avenue with which to create the combined organization. Under the merger, the Alliance programs, functions, liabilities, and assets will transfer to the foundation. The Alliance and foundation will enter into an agreement and plan of merger which is attached to the committee's report. In addition, the board and the board committees of the new entity will be subject to the Brown Act. So of course, the question is, what will the name of the new organization be? So in keeping with the goal to maintain the legacy of the Alliance, the combined organization is going to be called the Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts. However, while that's the legal name of the entity, the new organization is going to be branded simply as TO Arts. And the transition committee is currently working with a graphic design firm to design a logo and associated collateral materials. So in September, the Alliance and Foundation Boards met to establish both a vision and mission for TO Arts. So the vision, which refers to the Civic Arts Plaza, is for a place where the arts will thrive for all. And the mission of TO Arts is to advance, support, and present visual and performing arts, cultural events, and arts education at the Bank of America Performing Arts Center. So with the merger, of course, comes lots of legal agreements, which include amended and restated Articles of Incorporation, amended bylaws, a memorandum of understanding between the foundation and city, and the agreement and plan of merger between the Alliance and the foundation. All of these documents are attached to the reports you have before you tonight. So while TO Arts will operate independently from the city, a number of transactions of the organization will require ratification by city council. These transactions include adoption of the amended and restated Articles of Incorporation and any future amendments, adoption of the restated bylaws, any future amendments, amendments to the mission statement, and appointments of all board members. In addition, city council shall also have the authority to remove any member of the board. So the board structure will be comprised of seven board members, with three members coming from the Alliance for the Arts, three from the TOCAP Foundation, and one member from the community. The board will have term limits and may serve up to three terms of three years each, and the initial board terms will be staggered so there's not a major change in board members at any given time. In addition, officers may, of the board may serve up to two terms of two years each in a position, and again, those terms will be staggered so that we don't have a change in the leadership of the board at any given time. So the Alliance and Foundation Boards have both chosen their appointees to serve on the new TO Arts Board, and it's my pleasure to introduce them to you this evening. And I will ask that the new board appointees stand as I read off their names. So first is Bob Berry, representing a seat with the foundation, John Bradley with the Alliance for the Arts, Eloise Cohen with the Alliance for the Arts, David Mead with the foundation, and LeAnn Nielsen with the Alliance for the Arts. Oh, and I forgot Judy Linton from the foundation. Sorry, Judy. The best for last, what can I say? The seventh board member will be seated by no later than March 30th, and the transition team will serve as the nominating committee to choose a member to move forward for approval by the board, and then ratification by the city council. So the new board will also maintain a structure of standing, ad hoc, and advisory committees. The initial committees will include an audit committee, committee to oversee the investment of the endowments, founder services, fundraising, kids in the arts, and performance grants. And the community participation on these committees will serve to develop future board members for the new nonprofit. So a special advisory council will also be formed to provide advice and support to the board and to the executive director in addition to assisting with fundraising initiatives. The members of the advisory council will be chosen from current members of the Alliance and Foundation Boards, founders, members of Angels of the Alliance, as well as community and business leaders. For future openings on the board, the advisory council will serve as the nominating committee, forwarding a recommendation to the board to be approved, and then on to city council for final ratification. The Cultural Affairs Commission currently, two of the 11 seats on the city's Cultural Affairs Commission are nominated by the Alliance. The transition committee is recommending that those two seats be redesignated to be nominated by the new TO Arts Board. And the transition committee is also recommending this evening that John Bradley and Eloise Cohen, who currently serve in those seats on behalf of the Alliance, be appointed to complete their current terms as the new designees of the TO Arts Board. So key staff members from the city's cultural affairs and finance departments will provide support staff on a pro bono basis. The majority of these positions currently provide similar support to the foundation. To ensure a smooth transition between the Alliance and foundation, an Alliance employee will be hired as an employee of the Cultural Affairs Department to serve as TO Arts Development Coordinator with responsibility for donor engagement and founder services. This will be a one-year temporary position that will be reevaluated at the completion of the first year of operations. At this time, I'd like to turn the report over to the city's Director of Finance, John Adams, who will provide you with information on the financial structure.
Good evening. One of the key documents that is for consideration tonight for the council is the Memorandum of Understanding, or better known as an MOU. Couple key highlights for that MOU is, one of the things that the Alliance and the city had was a funding agreement in which the Alliance provided annual funding to the Theaters Fund. So for the first two years of the new organization, that annual support will continue, $300,000 for this fiscal year and $300,000 for the next fiscal year. But beginning in 2019, the funding will increase to $500,000. That will be based on the city's contribution to TO Arts to help provide that funding going forward in 2019. Another key element of the MOU is reserves. One of the concerns is to make sure that TOCAP programming, better known as CAP Presents, has adequate reserves in order to fund and promote programming here at the theaters. So that's another component of the MOU. And then the third component of the MOU is naming rights, sale and leasing of proceeds from those naming rights. The agreement is very similar to the current funding agreement with the Alliance, where all net proceeds go into an endowment that's specifically designated for the Theaters Fund. And then the third one is just an annual audit that will be performed on the organization. Moving on to the next, talking about the city's contribution. As Mr. McCombe mentioned, the city did make a commitment, a one-time commitment contribution to TO Arts for $4 million. That one-time commitment will be placed in a restricted endowment, which will have restrictions per the MOU. It will be deposited with a community foundation that is selected by TO Arts. There's several community foundations that are out there, and it will be up to the TO Arts Board to make that determination. And that will be, that will come back to council for ratification. A couple of the conditions on that contribution is, it will be capped at no more than 5% annual distribution, and at no point will that initial $4 million principal be invaded. Moving on to the Alliance funds. The Alliance, through the merger and after setting up proper reserves, the Alliance will have approximately 5.5 million in investment funds. Very key that both the Alliance and the city and the TOCAP Foundation agree that those funds should be protected. And so the MOU will talk about endowing or restricting those funds within a very similar community foundation or through a trust with an investment manager. That 5.5 million will have similar restrictions. At no point will the principal be able to be invaded, no more than a 5% annual distribution. And should the balance grow above 5.5 million, the TO Arts Board will have emergency provisions to be able to withdraw with a unanimous vote of the board and concurrence or ratification by the council. So one of the other things that we prepared as part of the transition was a draft budget. The first six months, the fiscal year for the new organization will continue to be the TO Foundation's fiscal year, which is July 1st through June 30th. So this really just shows you the first six months of the new organization. The first column is really the TO Arts, which is the merger with the Alliance. We will establish a beginning balance to fund operations for the first 18 months of about $610,000. And part of that money will be spent for transitional costs, including staffing. And then it will also be used for community grants, $150,000 for resident, resident company grants and community arts organizations, and then continued theater support, about $80,000. And then we also show how concessions and TOCAP programming do in the first six months. The second, the second year is July 1st, 2017 through 2018. Just shows you very similar, the first year for, or the second year for TO Arts and concessions in CAP Presents. Initially, there will not be any distributions from the restricted funds or the endowments until fiscal year 1819. That will help the endowments grow to be able to generate the 5% distribution. Part of that beginning balance is to withhold, or at least hold back about $600,000 to help fund the first 18 months of operations. Now, this is a draft budget. It will be up to the TO Arts Board to adopt their own budget for the first six months, and then for the full fiscal year starting July 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. So moving on to donor engagement, donor stewardship and engagement is going to remain an important part of TO Arts fundraising initiatives. Initially, the Founder's Services Program will include continuation of the concierge ticketing services, will have special VIP services such as reserved parking, pre-ordering of drinks, continue with the program of donor recognition, will have a number of donor special events, as well as insider access to the shows coming to the theaters. One of the longstanding Alliance programs is the Angels of the Alliance, which raises funds to support the Kids in the Arts Program. TO Arts will continue to support the Angels fundraising efforts, such as their annual luncheon and bazaar. And the fundraising strategy for the new entity is going to incorporate both contributed and earned income drawn from the sources listed here. A detailed fundraising plan will be prepared as part of the strategic plan. So TO Arts will continue with the key programs of CAP Presents. Our 2017-18 season is going to continue to focus on headline entertainment, family, and world music and educational programming. So TO Arts will also continue to oversee the theaters concession services, as well as holding the liquor license for the venue. The day-to-day operations of concessions are going to continue under a special management agreement with Arts is Golf. And under the new agreement, TO Arts will pay the theaters fund 20% of net profits earned through the concessions operation. TO Arts is going to continue with the Alliance's Dr. Raymond Olson Performance Grants Program, which currently provides $150,000 per year in funding to the three resident companies and 11 community arts organizations. The entity is also going to continue to administer a grants program on behalf of Mary and Richard Carpenter that provides funding for both large and small groups performing at the theaters. And finally, and most importantly, TO Arts will continue to administer and fund the Alliance's longstanding Kids in the Arts Program, which currently brings over 5,700 children from Title I schools to educational performances at the theaters each year. It's the goal of TO Arts to expand this program, to include artist residencies at local schools and master classes with visiting performers appearing at the theaters. So the transition team and the Alliance and Foundation Boards have reviewed the legal documents and required agreements for the merger. Both boards have approved the merger documents in concept. However, formal approval of the legal documents for the Alliance Board will occur on November 17th, and the Foundation Board actually approved the documents earlier this afternoon. It is the recommendation of the Ad Hoc City Theaters Fund Budget Review Committee that city council approve the following actions. First, to consent to the statutory merger of the Alliance into the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Foundation, to ratify the amended and restated Articles of Incorporation, to ratify the restated bylaws, to ratify the appointment of Bob Berry, John Bradley, Eloise Cohen, Judith Linton, David Mead, and LeAnn Nielsen to serve on the Board of Directors for the new organization, to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the city and the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Foundation, which will become effective upon state approval of the statutory merger. Pursuant to that Memorandum of Understanding- Pursuant to that Memorandum of Understanding, approve the appropriation and expenditure of the $4 million contribution from the General Fund. Also pursuant to that Memorandum of Understanding, approve appropriation and expenditure of $100,000 from the General Fund for the temporary transition position. Approve the agreement with the Foundation to provide concession services for the Bank of America Performing Arts Center for a term of 30 months. And finally, also adopt the resolution revising the Cultural Affairs Commission membership to re-designate the two seats currently nominated by the Alliance to the Arts, to the two seats nominated by TO Arts, and also appointing John Bradley and Eloise Cohen to complete their current terms as the designated representatives for TO Arts, beginning with the completion of the merger on January 3rd. And that completes the report. John Adams, Patrick Eher, and myself are available to answer any questions. In addition, there are representatives from the Alliance and the Foundation who will be serving on the new board that have additional comments regarding the proposed merger.
Thank you. Gentlemen, appreciate that. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before questions and actually public comment, a little point of personal privilege, I guess. This is a major, major accomplishment, both for the Alliance, for those that attend the performances here at the theaters, and certainly the city. On a personal note, I've been dealing with this issue for the better part of 10 years. Mr. Gillette's not in town anymore, but it goes back many, many years. There has been an evolving, changing of the landscape when it comes to municipal theaters and its operations. And tonight's action, while it's a 38-page report, it represents years of work and collaboration between the city and the Alliance. So I want to take this opportunity first to thank the many members of the Alliance for the arts, going way back to the very beginning. Simply stated, we would not be here today if it were not for the vision and the blood, sweat, and tears of those folks who raised money for the theaters. Starting out with a vision, and that vision turned into a plan, which was, in my view, perfectly executed over many, many years. And these are folks that did it on their own time, really, truly out of the love for the arts and a love for the city. As the years went by, many millions of dollars were raised in this community for the performing arts, for our theaters. And those early pioneers, if you will, we owe them a debt of gratitude. As the years went by, and in really almost any endeavor, the landscape changes, things change, and it required the city and the Alliance to take a hard look at the relationship, at the partnership, at the changing landscape, if you will, and try to stay ahead of the curve, so to speak. And that's what tonight's action represents. For the new members of the Board, thank you for your willingness to serve. And I know I speak for the council, we're counting on you. We are counting on you. In my view, your role is just as important as any commission in the city, if not more important. And as a new endeavor, we're counting on the Board to maintain the vision that is set forth through the Alliance and the city, to make this partnership a success. I also want to acknowledge the city staff, who has done a great job through this entire process, starting with Mr. McComb. He is the new Executive Director of this Board, and the fact of the matter is, without Berry's vision and his leadership, we would probably still be toiling and trying to figuring out the many complexities of this issue. Also, I want to thank Ms. Noonan. There's a tremendous amount of legal issues that go with the merging of these two entities, and her and her staff have done a great job. Certainly, Mr. Adams, with the finance, you're dealing with many, many millions of dollars. And certainly, Mr. Powers, who has provided the overall leadership. So the staff has done a great job. And then finally, I want to thank Mr. Adams. He served on the committee with myself. If you don't know, Mr. Adams is not only a council member, but he's also a founder. And so his insight, his love of the arts, had played a key role in reconciling the many, many difficult negotiations that we had. Also want to thank the negotiation team from the Alliance, in particular, Mr. Bradley, Mr. Williams, Ms. Cohen, and Mr. Lewis. We had many, many meetings, difficult conversations, but I am very proud, very proud of the outcome. And I am extremely enthusiastic, and I believe that the action the council will take tonight will serve our city well into the next decade. So thank you for that point of personal privilege, if you will, Mr. Mayor, and I'm anxious to hear the public comment.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Adams, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, since we're thanking people, I'm going to thank Andy Fox as well. Andy brings a lot to the table, great negotiation and mediating skills, and his expertise and his long history with the city proves invaluable in negotiations like this. So thank you, Andy. And let me just say, these theaters are a huge community asset. We all know that. They've proven that over the last 20 years. And yeah, they have, we have a beautiful lobby, and we have beautiful theaters, great acts that come in, but they do more than just that. They do more than just that. These theaters bring our community together. Ray Olson knew that when he asked that we build a place. Alex Fiori knew that when he pushed so hard to have these theaters built. So they're more than just an anifice with some, with some great entertainment. They bring us together. They bring us together as a community. Our neighbors, our friends, our family can gather under one roof. And as divisive as this society has become, that is just a great benefit to the city of Thousand Oaks, I believe. And that's why they're such a priority to this council. And that's why we work so hard to balance this budget, and that's why we work so hard on this merger, which puts together the best of both organizations and the best talent to perpetuate these theaters for many, many years to come. So I'm happy that I played a small part in it. I think we're really entering into a new era of success. And I too want to thank Tracy, and I want to thank Barry and John, and I want to thank Drew for all the Sunday afternoons you spent there, eating cold pizza and hammering this thing out. And from the Alliance, I want to thank John Bradley, who's there every, every time, and Eloise Cohen, Bob Lewis, and Richard Williams, and the whole Alliance, of course. But you folks are so dedicated to the arts, and it really showed in these, in these talks that we had. And we all had a common ground, the love of the arts and what's best for these theaters. And I think that's exactly what's going to culminate into tonight in this agreement that we've reached. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Then if there are no other questions of council, we'll go to our speakers. First up is Mr. Bob Berry, followed by Leanne Nielsen, and lastly, Mr. Nick Kidway.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, my name is Bob Berry. I'm the current President of the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Foundation. And in 1993, when the City Council approved the formation of the Foundation, I was one of the officers listed in the incorporation papers. Some of my other comments are going to echo what certainly Andy and Al have already said, but I'm here tonight to commend the efforts of the city staff, council members, the Alliance representatives, over this last year and a half, putting the, and developing the long-term plan for the operation of Performing Arts Center. I also wish to thank the approximately 30 individuals, that included city staff, Alliance members, Foundation Board members, and facilitator, in developing a vision and a mission for the new organization and all the documents you have in front of you tonight. I'm excited about the creation of a new organization and being part of its future. In closing, I'll recognize the work done by City Attorney's Office, Andrew Powers, John Adams, and especially Barry McComb, in pulling the reorganization together with the new name, Thousand Oaks Alliance for the Arts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Leanne Nielsen, followed by Mr. Kidway. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Nielsen. I'm a member of the Board of the Alliance for the Arts, and I've been nominated to serve as a member of the new Board, which will be formed as part of this merger. The Board of the Alliance for the Arts and the members of the Alliance for the Arts have both voted unanimously to recommend approval of this partnership. We are excited to join forces with the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza Foundation to create a partnership that will leverage the strengths of two powerful local art entities. Over 30 years ago, Dr. Raymond M. Olson, founding father of the Alliance for the Arts, dreamed of a place for his community. He said, "We need a place, a place where we can perform, a place where we can exhibit. We need a place where we can simply come together." That place became a reality, and we are very fortunate tonight to be in that place. Since its creation in the mid-1980s, the Alliance for the Arts has raised millions of dollars to sustain and enhance arts in the Caneo Valley. There are many donors, founders, and volunteers who have been generous in both their time and treasure to make this place a reality. I want to acknowledge the dedication and the impact that they made to the success of the Civic Arts Plaza. I also want to join the others in thanking Drew Powers, Tracy Noonan, John Adams, and Barry McComb for their work as members of the Transition Team. We look forward to working closely with Berry and supporting all he does to make these theaters thrive. The merger of the Alliance for the Arts and the TOCAP Foundation will combine fundraising and programming, resulting in strong support and exceptional benefits for local arts and donors. We look forward to continuing the work with the Angels to support the kids in the arts, and we look forward to continuing the arts performance grants to enable local performing arts organizations to perform on these stages. I want to thank the City Council of Thousand Oaks for your support of this merger and for your financial support to move us into a new chapter to ensure the sustainability of our theaters and their place in our community. I believe this merger will combine the strengths of the Alliance for the Arts and the TOCAP Foundation to continue to support a place where the arts thrive for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. Do you have a comment? Mr. Adam, I'm sorry, Mr. Powers, looking right at you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a quick mention, we're acknowledging a number of folks here tonight. And Leanne Nielsen has been a key member of the Transition Team, and for those that don't know, she's also the Provost at CLU, so she has a very busy job. And her administrative skill has certainly been on display throughout this process, and I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to her as well.
Thank you. And our last speaker tonight, Mr. Nick Kidway. Good evening.
I begin in the name of God, who is the most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Balkidway. I'm a resident of Newbury Park since 77, and Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks since 1991. Honorable Mayor, Council, I would like to first of all thank all the arts lovers and all the organizations that have given selflessly to this cause, including the original Board of Governors and the late Virginia Davis. But I would like to, with all due respect, say we need to go back to square one. What was the square one? This city was founded by a lot of blue collar workers. You can see the old town, small homes with not huge incomes. They were not the kind of people that go to ballets or to theaters, and they did not want their money, taxpayer hard-earned dollars going to subsidize taxes, arts. And there was an internal fight in the 80s that I watched on TV, and they submitted petitions and the city, they were not given a fair play. They were not given a fair ride. It's very sad, and the city played politics with them. But the bottom line is that the arts people said that we will build this thing, but not a single taxpayer dollar will be spent. And for 20 years, there was a facade of hiding the deficits. And I spoke against it. I said, "You have to give money," because all over the world, the Taj Mahal, the arts, Leonardo da Vinci, there are very few people that make money in the arts. You have to subsidize it. But the problem is that even today, the bleeding is not going to stop with the $4 million. If it would stop, I would say, okay. But $300,000 and then half a million, and the door is open for unlimited funds. And I'm not opposed to it. I'm not negative about it, but just being realistic and a taxpayer advocate is that, like Mr. Fonty's letter is there, I mean, there's a 70-page contract in the green packet that was submitted at 11:30, 1:30. Who has had the time to read that, to digest that? Why, I mean, this is the way the city operates. That's why we are in the mess. But Mr. Fonty's letter, my letters, they are in the back, page 75, 76, 77. We have to, the theaters are a reality. They've been a reality. We do not want it to be like Port Winingy where we have rotting theater. We need them to flourish. If TO TV can show that. The problem is that nobody comes up and says, "Sorry, we made a mistake. Let's move on. Let's embrace each other." And there's, I mean, I might be the voice here, the bad guy that's speaking, but there's, if you go down, there's many people that are, that still remember it. The scars are still there. I wish you the best of luck. I hope that sinner heads will prevail and that we will join hands together.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Then, very well. This is a department report. I'm looking for promotion here, to approve. I think you, I saw you do something, but I think you hit the wrong button. Ms. Bill DeLapena.
I wanted to make a comment rather than make a motion.
That's fine.
I, I'm deferring to the committee members, Andy Fox and Al Adams, perhaps, to make the motion. They were very much involved. But I wanted to thank both Andy Fox and Al Adams for very hard work over at least 18 months, if not more. This took a level of dedication that is rarely seen here at City Hall, and I wanted to let everybody know, who is not a big fan of the arts, that this, as far as the arts go, is a watershed moment in Ventura County and beyond. This is the evidence and the sign that the arts play a vital role and a vital part in everyone's lives. When I hear that blue collar workers don't want to subsidize, I have to disagree. The arts is for everybody, and this merger will make it possible for those who cannot afford to see a musical, a concert, a performance, a ballet, to be able to attend. I am very enthusiastic about the Kids in the Arts Program, because that's where it begins. We have to instill a love of the arts early on, and I'm very hopeful that with this merger, we will be able to work with the school district and other schools to start to bring arts into every child's life. As an example, the police department has a program called Safe Passages. And as part of educating lower-income children who otherwise might be entering a path to a darker world, the Police Foundation enabled for many of the children to see their first musical performance, or to see a ballet, or to see a concert, to go camping overnight, to even see the ocean, or take them to a bookstore that they had not ever been to. It starts early on. We have to instill a love for one another, for community, and it begins with the arts. So tonight is such a pivotal moment to see that everyone has come together to make this happen. Yes, it was painful, I'm sure. I wasn't part of the discussions, but I would have loved to be a fly on the wall. Thank you so much for your patience and your undying love for the arts and your commitment, and I wish everyone the best of luck, and I'm sure that this will be successful. Thank you.
Beautifully said. Ms. DeLapena. Mr. McCoy?
I just wanted to add that in 2004, my daughter was 13 years old, and she met Kim Miselli of the California Dance Academy, and had a dream of doing ballet. And you don't start at 13 with ballet, but because of all that was afforded to her by this community, she danced her first performance right here and had a privilege to go on to the Joffrey Ballet. And that's all a result of the hard work of you and those who were before you and what... And that's all a result of the hard work of you and those who were before you and what Al and Andy have done, and I just wanted to say tonight, thank you on a personal level, and I look forward to the future with what has been put together, so thanks so much.
Thank you, and I will certainly echo all those comments. It goes without saying that we owe each and every one of you, and even those beyond the folks that are here tonight, a deep debt of gratitude for all that you've done for the arts community over the past many, many years, so. Mr. Adams?
Well, I suppose I could make a motion then, all right? And I would motion that we approve the statutory merger between the Alliance for the Arts and the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza and staff recommendations 1 through 9.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Ms. Rodriguez, if you would prepare for a vote. Oh, Ms. Bill de La Peña, do you have another comment before we vote?
Yeah, a quick comment, it's very fitting for a founder of the Civic Arts Plaza to make, to make the motion. I did not want to be remiss in thanking the very hardworking staff of the City of Thousand Oaks, from Barry McComb all the way to Tracy Noonan, Drew Powers, everybody who was involved, worked extremely hard on this, and John Adams, Patrick Heer. Thank you so much for staying committed, really appreciate that, and see your work coming to fruition. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we will vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations. And that takes us to item number 9A, an appeal of a planning commission decision regarding a residential plan development permit, major mod. And Ms. Rodriguez, if you would open that hearing, please.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 9A regarding appeal of planning commission decision regarding residential plan development permit major modification, RPMJ 2016-70123, deletion of solar awnings and solar mansard roofs on patio covers at two office buildings located at 4165 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. The applicant appellant is Selvin Properties. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for City Council and the city record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two individuals have presented speaker cards and pursuant to council standards. The applicant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal, and the remaining speakers are allowed five minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Then I think we are first going to go to, give us a moment, we're going to hear from Mr. Town first to give a staff report on this item, Mr. Selvin, so you might want to sit down, it could be a bit. Our interim community development director, Mr. Town, and I see Assistant City Attorney Patrick Heer up there as well. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As was just noted, this is an appeal of a planning commission, a part of a planning commission decision that was held recently, and if you bear with me, I will start the PowerPoint to give you some background on this. So again, the appellant and applicant are Selvin Properties, properties located at 4165 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And specifically, what we will be discussing tonight is an appeal of a planning commission decision that approved a previous project in part, but part, the part of the project that the commission did not approve was the installation of solar panels on proposed awnings and on the mansard roof elements on proposed patio covers. This is the subject property location, and as you can see, it includes two buildings. Building A is the one on the west side, building B is the one here on the east side. As you can see in terms of reference points, Lakeview Canyon abutting the east side of the property, this is Westlake High School to the southwest, and south is the Promenade Plaza and the Northgate Plaza to the west. And this is on the north side of, of course, Thousand Oaks Boulevard. These are some images of the buildings under discussion tonight. This is building A, the one on the west side, and actually, in this photo, we have other photos later, but you can see a bit of a mock-up here, which we have, we will discuss momentarily, but this is the view of building A looking northwest. This is the courtyard at building A. And this is building B on the east side, looking north over Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Some of the architectural features of building B. This is on the eastern side, again facing Lakeview Canyon. So the, excuse me, planning commission had their hearing on this matter on August 29th. As I noted, the solar panels on the top of the roof and on the new patio covers were approved. The, again, the commission did not approve the solar panels on the awnings and the mansard roof elements of the patio covers. Overall, what was approved by the commission represented about 75% of the total solar panel area. Therefore, obviously, the awnings represent the balance, or about 25% of the total proposed area of the solar panels. An appeal was filed subsequently by, by the applicant, and it was really a, an appeal based on two fundamental points. One was that the evaluation of the solar panels is a subjective decision in the opinion of the appellant, and I think there's, to be fair, there's value in that, that statement, and that the council has more latitude than the planning commission in terms of interpreting city guidelines. Staff's position with regard to the solar panels on the awnings and the mansard roof elements has been that they are inconsistent with certain city policies. These were outlined in the planning commission staff report, and fundamentally come down to three points. One is that primary building surfaces should typically be muted earth tones, that buildings' design should be compatible with not only nearby commercial development, but also other building materials on the subject buildings themselves or itself. And then typically metallic appearing materials should not be used in prominent locations on a building. Based on those factors, staff again had recommended denial of this one element of the project, and the planning commission took a similar position on a 3-1 vote based on these same findings. I just also wanted to mention, obviously, that the city is supportive of solar power, there are many installations throughout the city on both public and private property, on rooftops, in solar carport locations. Those have been very successfully implemented throughout the city. But also to note that this is a precedent-setting issue. This is the first time the solar panels have been proposed as an architectural feature, and the fact that it is the first time isn't the deciding factor, of course, but just so that the council is aware that it is the first time that the, that panels have been proposed in this, in this context. This image is a planned view of building A, and just to, to note again, there are panels proposed on the roof, such as this array, this array, this array, those have all been approved. There are panels proposed on the top of the patio covers, such as here, such as here, those have all been approved. What we're talking about tonight are these sort of perimeter panels. These are the awnings and the wrap around the buildings. The patio covers, by the way, are only on building A, but both buildings have solar awnings proposed. And this is a cross-section of the building A showing those patio covers, so you can see, this is all, this is all new construction, and again, the patio covers themselves have already been approved, just not the solar panels on, on the, on this roof element, and this is a mansard type roof. Just to give an indication of building B, this is the south elevation facing Thousand Oaks Boulevard and where the awnings are proposed. The applicant prepared photo simulations of the proposed solar panels, and this is a photo simulation of building A, so you're looking north, northeast again. These are the, again, photo simulation of the panels on the patio covers. And this is a photo simulation looking due north of building A. Again, you can see the solar panels here, here. And then this is an image of what building B would look like if such panels were approved, and obviously, they're right here, here. Building already has black glazing, as you can see. These are photo simulations of a couple of details. This is an image of one of the patio covers with the solar on top. Staff actually thinks the patio covers are a great idea, those will really enhance the building and be a nice amenity. This is another photo simulation detail showing what the building looks like today. Here it is before, and then after. You can see the existing windows, the proposed solar on top of the awnings. The applicant did also prepare a small mock-up. They painted this existing awning black to simulate the, the dark color of the solar panels, which are black, and then also installed a sample panel on top of the awning. It's, it's obviously a general representation, because it doesn't have the racking underneath that panel that, that you would have implemented, obviously, as required during construction, but it does give you a sense of, of what it may look like. Again, this is an image of that same mock-up with one panel on the painted awning. And it's a close-up of that, that panel. Again, this does not have, obviously, the, the support system underneath, that would be about two inches thick, it would raise it off what would otherwise be a metal awning support structure. In conclusion, staff, as I mentioned, does have concerns regarding the aesthetic aspects of the panels on these two components of the project, based on the policies that I mentioned before, which involve consistency with the, the buildings in the vicinity, the introduction of metallic appearing elements, and the, the fact that the buildings would be significantly darker overall with the combination of the existing windows and the proposed awnings. And, and just to reiterate that it would be, in staff's opinion, a precedent-setting So we do recommend that the council adopt the resolution included in the, in your packet that would deny the appeal and support the planning commission's decision. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Town. Questions with staff, anyone? Very good, then we will go to our speakers, and first up is Mr. Harry Selvin. I'm sorry, Mr. Fox, you have a question now?
Yeah, I do. Mr. Town, you talked about the precedent-setting nature of the request, and in listening to your presentation, I'm, I'm taking away that that's the primary reason staff's recommending denial of the appeal, is that correct?
The, the primary reason is that we don't think that the, the proposal is consistent with those specific city policies. That's the primary reason.
Okay.
The, and a result of this project, if it were to be approved, would be precedent-setting, but that's not the reason per se that the staff is, has taken its position.
Can you give the council a example, it may be difficult, can you give us an example of if we were to approve this request, what that would likely look like down the road? As an example, what other commercial businesses could then come in and say, "Hey, we want solar also, and since it doesn't have to be on the roof, we want to place it in X, Y, and Z." Can you give the council a little bit of an idea of when you, we talk about precedent-setting, what kind of box are we opening up here?
Well, the, the key here is that, is that the proposed awnings are really being proposed as an architectural feature, in, in staff's opinion. These are awnings that wrap around the buildings. They're significant in length, the, the approximate linear length is about 1,400 feet, so these are not small sort of features, they're not, they're not accents, they are a significant part of the building design. So you could see other buildings, on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, for instance, commercial office buildings that may, may opt to go in this direction. It could even be, the principle could be applicable to residential type development, because residential type development is governed by policies that broadly reflect these which are designed for architectural buildings, or, or, commercial buildings, sorry, based on our architectural guidelines. So the, the sort of repercussions are pretty broad, both on commercial buildings and, and potentially even on residential.
The, the other question I have is regarding the mock-ups. You mentioned that the mock-ups weren't entirely accurate in that there would be apparatus underneath the panels that would, I think you mentioned two to three inches, that would change the, the, the visual impact of the panels. Why do we not have a mock-up that at least gives the council a little idea of what, what we're talking about?
Probably best answered by, by the applicant, but the, the supporting structure, the racking system, as we call it, it's according to the, the detail that we were provided, it's, it's about one and three quarters inch, a little bit under two inches, and so there would be that, that potential gap between the racking system and, and the panels.
But it would be visually, as I walked around the building yesterday, it would visually be obvious that they're raised off, that it would not be flush mounted?
Correct.
All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Selvin, for your patience on that.
But I think Mr. McCoy might have a question.
Real quick question, how many businesses, percentage-wise, in Thousand Oaks use solar?
Ah, that's a great question. We have, I don't really have a percentage, but we have rooftop solar at the Oaks Mall, almost over the entire Oaks Mall. We have solar carport structures on top of the Oaks Mall parking structure. We have them on the new office buildings immediately east of the Hyatt Hotel. They, in fact, require that solar carports be provided. We have, in the public realm, we have solar carports at four Caneo Recreation and Park District.
So it's fairly limited at this point?
It's, we have it on top of the Coles Department Store. Typically, the large, the large formats, sort of the big box type buildings are, those owners are moving this direction, in terms of rooftop solar or, or solar carports.
Thank you.
I had one more question, actually.
I see that, Mr. Fox.
Thank you. Is there any way to calculate the energy savings that the currently approved application has relative to the building use, and how much more the energy savings would be if these were added?
I believe that the applicant has, has estimated that 50 to 60% of the total power needs of the buildings could be supplied by the solar, so it's a significant amount. That's including the awnings.
That does include the awnings?
Correct.
Okay, if we remove the awnings, what would that be?
It would be about 25% of that, so it'd be a reduction of about 12 to 15%.
Now, I, I noted that the planning commission approved for the parking area and the roof, if these awnings, if we use the entire parking area with the, with solar panels, does that basically give them the same or more energy savings?
We don't really, I mean, staff doesn't really know the answer to that question. That, solar carports have not, the evaluation has not been done as far as, as I'm aware by the applicant. We have raised that on multiple occasions. The applicant indicated that it would be a potential second phase, but we don't have the data in terms of the awnings to compare to a potential solar carport.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I think it's finally your turn, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you for your patience.
We're going to pass out some booklets for the city council. Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you for allowing me to come up here and present my case. Just for the records, I was, I'm a founding member of the Alliance. I was on the Cultural Affairs Commission by many other names for over 22 years. My signature as the program chair was on the, oh my, the Symphony Theater League, Cabrio. And I'm glad to have served all those years, and I love the area. I would never, never, never do anything that would be offensive or abrasive in any way. Let's start with solar panels. Throw away your concept of solar panels because what you've probably seen consistently is a patch on a roof. That's not what we're doing. This is going to be an integral part of the building. It's solid, it's called black, but it's actually a soft charcoal with black frames, and it will be an integral part of the building. Is this the first time? Yes. However, it's going to be pinstriped, and it's going to cover walkways and awnings. Well, let's see how I can get this started. Bob, do you want to? All right. No, no, don't put it on yet. As far as aesthetics are concerned, black and white is a very mod, up-to-date, high-tech look. The tenants love the look and are thrilled with the potential savings. I must disagree with Mark. He said the awnings only represent 25% of our energy savings. It's really a third. But one of the problems is we're doing some incredible things on the patios for the tenants using solar. If we don't get the awnings, it makes that unfeasible. And as far as we're concerned, that's 2/3 of the project that would be affected. All right, if you can start rolling it? Okay. Mark stole some of my thunder by showing my slides earlier. So some of it's going to be a repeat. If we can get it rolling here? Okay. That's what we're looking at is, the building is made with one floor, two floors, three floors, and you can see the roof structure there. That's a shot of the roof, and we have another shot of the roof. And if you notice, the awnings over there are over walkways as well as windows. So it's not all awnings, but we use the same configuration in order to be consistent. That's what we're proposing those rooftops to look like. We're planning to put solar on the top. We're going to cover the bottom layer so none of the wires are exposed. It won't look mechanical. It'll look like a finished piece of fixture on the building. You notice on the front side, on the bottom, there is a walkway that we're going to have to build to get other tenants to be able to enjoy these patio covers. We considered carports, and this is very similar to a carport, except it's much more expensive. Carports are good, but they're double the cost. And one of the reasons you don't see these things on commercial buildings is very few owners will go through the expense, and we call it an ROI, return on investment, stretch it out so far that they do these things. Actually, we have always considered ourselves ahead of the game. We put in artificial turf, one of the first, because we were under oak trees, we couldn't put anything else. But those have been on the property for over 10 years, and if you buy quality and you do a quality job, it lasts. They look as good today as the day we put them in. We put in drip systems, automatic faucets, waterless urinals, everything to comply with energy conservation. Now, let's talk about colors and suns. That is a picture of the outside of the building with the carports. We'll come back to that in a minute. With those, that is what is the finished product. It's beautiful. It's black, it's white, very mod, very high-tech. Those are all before and after shots. And as you can see, there's not a great change in the building or the color. Look at the side of the building. 80% of that building is covered by trees, shrubs, and is not visible for anybody. Now, let's take a look at awnings. Guess what? These awnings that you're going to see are from the Oaks Mall, Jan's Mall, Caruso Center. And let me address the Caruso Center for just a minute. Rick Lemo is a good friend of mine, but I called him when I saw the letter that got sent to you, and I asked him, why did he send the letter? What was the reasoning behind it? And he said, quote, "We always back the planning department." Period. And I asked him, is that a good enough reason? Did you, he did not look at the mock-up. He did not see any of the plans or pictures that we had, but he backed the planning department. And that's good. It's called cover, you're back, and I guess that's all right. Truthfully, I love Caruso and what he's done. I really admire him. He's done some incredible centers and features and whatever, and they've all been, quote, "up-to-date, ahead of everybody else," and I think that's wonderful. I have no problem with that. Take a look at more awnings. Some of these are from the Jan's Mall. Some are from Caruso Center on the lakes. There's Jan's Mall. You find colors, you find styles, you find everything. Over there, there's two cloth awnings and a metal one over the doorway. Here, look at these, all types, all sizes. Wood awnings in the lake's center, not on approved lists, but they're there. I asked the planning department, how did they get there? And he said, well, it was part of the project. It just got overlooked. There's the underside of the wood. That's at the lakes, right next door to us here. Look at those. All of these are colorful, they're pretty, and you want to know the truth? I've been here well over 25 years, and when I first moved in, you could paint any color you wanted as long as it was brown. Now, come on. We've come a long way since then, and there's tile roofs, not on the approved list. All kinds, size, shapes, wooden, there's tile on buildings. There's steel and glass, not on the approved list. Again, steel and glass, not on the approved list. This is, again, Jan's Mall, Caruso Center, the lakes, and do you want to know the truth? I think they're gorgeous. I have no problem with it. But look at Gold's Gym. What is that? Is that an awning? And if so, that's incredible. Look at there. This is in the lakes, there's two different colors, and again, stripes, again, wood and metal. I'm going through this a little fast, but when you walk on our property, on the sidewalk outside of our property, and you're walking from east to west, you can't even see the building. 80% or 85% is probably, and I love the landscaping, but you can't see it. That's, all you can see is that portion right there. So that's the end of the PowerPoint presentation. I'll go a step further. Our theater that we're sitting in right now was not on the approved list, and I'm glad it was built, really glad. There are all kinds of variations that are not on the approved list. And when I went in front of the planning commission, what I heard is, quote, "It's not on our list." Does that make it good or bad? I have a phrase I've used over the years. There's an ice cream chain with 31 flavors of ice cream. I like about five or six of them. I don't know why they make the others, but there's something for everybody. That doesn't mean that they're bad because I don't like some of the tutti-frutti with the bubble gum and whatever, but a lot of people like it. It's good, it's positive. There's nothing wrong with that. Today, we don't use typewriters, we use computers. We don't have buggy whips anymore. I could go on and on and on. We don't use wristwatches, we use our cellphone. We have to move with the elements. It's called progress, and it's time to move into the future. The planning commission list needs to be updated and more current. I can't blame them for rejecting it because, quote, "It's not on my list." Now, here's the rejection, and it's in your report. Staff's position is that solar panels on awnings and man-side roof elements, and I assume they're talking about the sloping part where the panel will be, are inconsistent with city policies. Now, our awnings there, I bought the building about four years ago. The awnings were there when I bought the building. They're the same shape, they're the same, in fact, the panels will be a little bit smaller. We were talking about racking. Everything's hidden. We're making a first-class project. We're not making, dumping a few panels on and running. Here, it says, "Metallic metal materials should not be used on prominent exterior surfaces." Well, we've seen pictures of metal awnings, tile awnings, we've seen steel and glass. All of these, most of these are not on the approved list. I love them. I think they're great. I don't argue that. I'm only making a point saying that I think it's time we stepped up to the plate and we approve a bit of progress here with the solar panels. It's going to be an integral part of the building. It's not going to be patchwork. And I'm going to close with a comment. I have two others that are going to follow me here, but I'm going to close with a comment that Mary Kay Cosmetics used to use all the time, and I love it. And they said, there are three types of people in this world. One, that makes things happen. Two, that watch things happen. Three, those that say, what happened? Where are we going to be? This is an integral part of the building. It's not patchwork. And I might add, I talked to Jackie Irwin, and she sent me a copy of the statue, and it's in your booklet there. I think it's, I think it's on page, on page five, the fifth page of your booklet, and it says, the statue definitely says, "The only reasons you can deny solar is for public health and safety." Now, an attorney did find a little loophole, and he did manage to get something passed, but they're attempting to plug the loophole. The solar people have said, hey, we'll come down there and fight with you and litigate. I'm not that type. I don't want that. It's not in my being. All I'm saying is, take this with an open mind. It's a beautiful, beautiful concept. It's a win-win for our tenants. It's a win-win for the city. It'll upgrade, and we'll do a nice job. And I leave you with that. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Next up is David Crabill.
I'm one of the staff, and he wanted me to speak because he'd make it real simple.
If you would come up to the mic, please, so that way it's picked up.
Hi, my name is Paul Wise, and I was retained by Harry Sullivan here.
Did, I don't have a speaker card for you.
I know you don't, do not, but Harry is supposed to have me come up in the middle of this to explain some of the-
Okay, give me just one second, then. After you're done, I'll allow you to speak, but if you'd please fill out a speaker card after you're done. I appreciate it.
I will. I'll definitely do it.
Your name and city residence, please.
My name is Paul Wise. I live in Simi Valley, California. I've been a Ventura County resident for over 30 years. I spent many times here with my daughter as well, going to plays and going to her productions and dance, so I can definitely feel with what you're going through. I am a licensed energy practitioner. I work across the United States. I'm LEED certified as Leadership through Environmental Energy Design through the U.S. Green Building Council, as well as NAVCEP certified, which is North American Board Certified Energy Practitioner. Harry came to me with, he wanted me to ask you and see if we can come up with some kind of resolution for this. It's pretty simple. I mean, I understand that your job is very, you want to maintain the look of the city, but then we have the progress of moving forward with solar energy. Some of the things that Harry has designed on this building are going to be building-integrated, so you're not going to be seeing racking, you're not going to be seeing the metal frames and racking. So it's not going to be, as Mark had talked about earlier, showing two inches above the roof line. It's going to be a part of the structure itself. Also, too, in answer to a couple of questions that Mr. Fox had, Councilman Fox, about energy production. So the energy productions that are on the finestrations or on the outside awnings, they're going to add to the building's overall performance, not only adding about 25% of the energy that they need for that building, but it's also going to also work in a different way inside the building itself. So it's going to reduce the amount of heat gain into those buildings and making the energy savings more of like 30% on top of that with less use of air conditioning, less use of all the CO2 gases that we use just to maintain air conditioning in a building. So one of the things that we're looking at doing with Harry's buildings is making these things LEED-certified, gold or platinum. It's probably going to be gold. But LEEDs is through the U.S. Green Building Council. Basically, it has to do with environmental design. And so all of the projects that Harry has worked on on all of his properties, he has installed water irrigation systems, drip irrigation systems, he's planted native plants, he's done everything he could for conserving water inside the building. He's done a great job with doing flushless urinals for men's restrooms. He's put in LED lights inside of his buildings, and now he wants to cap it off with solar and doing solar over finestrations. And so by doing that, it helps the entire living space in that building. And that's what we're trying to get to, a point where we can make these buildings on the national registry, which looks good for the city of Thousand Oaks, as well as it does for the owner of the property, Harry Sullivan. And so he is trying to do what he can to make the best of what he has to work with. And I just like, that is basically what we have to say, that we need your help to change this variance. Just give us a variance for this one building or change the rule altogether. But it's going to be a building-integrated photovoltaic system into the awnings. It's going to be covered architecturally, so you're not going to see big standoffs, you're not going to see big pipes, you're not going to see wires hanging down. It does not look like a residential house that has a two- or six-inch- It is, does not look like a residential house that has a two or six-inch standoff. And so it'll look really, really good. And all the properties that Harry has worked on have all looked outstanding. So, thank you very much, Council. If you have any questions for me, I'd gladly ask you any questions.
Ms. Bill de La Pena, question for the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question. I know that Mr. Sullivan mentioned if he went the carport route, it would be too expensive. Is it too expensive to make the whole project? Or would it be possible to do the project without the, the carports?
Well, the carports, he's looking at a second, at another phase. He wanted to do the stuff in the building itself first. The carports do add to a LEED certification as well. There is extra cost for carports. You're digging large trench, you're digging posts all the way down the ground, sixteen feet down in the ground sometimes. There's soil engineering, there's all kinds of other stuff that go along with it. So sometimes it makes the cost, the initial cost for doing a carport, more than he needs. And what we're looking at doing with the energy that he's doing with the top of the roof, and as well as the, around the building, the finestrations, it's going to reduce his energy load by fifty percent, which means it's going to reduce the, the cost of operating that facility, probably by seventy-five percent. And be able to understand a levelized cost for the next thirty years. And so, the solar panels that we're planning on putting on the, on the finestrations, on the awnings, are basically going to be up there for thirty-five to forty years with no problems at all. So, the carports would be the second step. The first step would be doing the roof and doing the awnings. And he's doing it for a number of reasons. It makes the, as Mark had talked about, the, the little canopy areas, over the areas where he's going to have people in the office buildings using that, utilizing that during the daytime. It's going to be a place for them to commune. It's also going to help the environment inside the building. So, in essence, the cost effectiveness right now for a carport is more than he can afford, but he can do the other projects that he has already on the dockets.
So this project will die if the awnings are not included?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McCoy.
I think you answered this, but if you could repeat it. If the carports are installed and you do solar with the carports, what would be the energy efficiency of the entire building with the awnings, carports, the...
Sure. Sure, you're looking at about seventy-five to eighty percent of the energy needed for the building with the carports.
May I answer that, please? We are not intending to put in carports for two reasons. One, that area is buildable, and the previous owner have had plans and have been in the city and show that as a buildable area with subterranean parking. And we would put solar on the rooftop over there and follow through. However, at this time, we're not anticipating carports. We see, we feel one-third is on the awnings, one-third is on the roof, and one-third is on the patio covers. And that is the way we look at, in round numbers, how the energy savings will take place. If we don't get the awnings, we may not do the patio covers, because they are tremendously expensive to do, and we may not do those. We need the awnings in order to break out the financial costs and make it all feasible.
Thank you.
I have one line I'd like to read. I forgot to read or mention. And I said, "I'm not the eight-hundred-pound gorilla like some of the other property owners, but many exceptions have been made in the past. Frankly, I feel they're all positive." If you look in your booklet, you'll find an endorsement from my next-door neighbor, the property owner, numerous endorsements from my existing tenants in the building. And the bottom line is, if I do something that's not good, I have more to lose than anybody else, because I would have an empty building. So, I hope you consider it.
I think there are some other questions for you, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sullivan, I can ask staff this question, but I'm sure you know, I'm reading the report here, and I'm, based on the testimony, I'm reading the report. I'm having a hard time reconciling. Did you get approval from the planning commission for the patio awnings and the cover for solar on the patio?
They did give me an approval on the roof and the patio covers. Denied the awnings, and that's what we're here for. Because without the awnings, it's questionable whether we would do the patio covers.
All right, I just need to know what was approved and what's not. So tonight, your request is just the awnings, everything else was approved?
Just the awnings, yes.
Okay, fair enough. All right, thank you.
I have one more.
Mr. Sullivan, if, if I may, please, ask you a question. I, I guess what I'm struggling with is that the photographs that I've seen of the mockups show, I think, panels that are raised off of the roof. They are clearly visible to me. What you're, what you're telling us, and what your, your consultant is telling us as well, is that these are going to be part of the roof line itself, and that they are not going to be two to three, or two to four inches above the roof like they are in a residential application, like they are on my house. But yet, everything that I've seen shows that. They're, they're clearly visible to me. So I guess what I'm struggling with is, as a former planning commissioner myself, I've seen a number of projects that have come forward, and, and we have precise architectural drawings that show what it is that we're approving. And in this case here, I'm not seeing that. And that's, I'm struggling with that. So, are you able to, to help me reconcile that?
The roof will be totally, we have a, a carpet wall there, and all the roof installations will be hidden. What we're really talking about, the only things that will be visible will be the patio covers, and you're going to be looking generally at the bottom side of it, which would be a beige or a material suitable for the planning department. We have proposed one or two different ones. There's one that's metal, and we would have it painted a beige color or white. They said they didn't like it. I said, "Fine, I'll change it. I'll put a material on there." It's immaterial as long as it looks good. So, the awnings will be show, will be visible. But from the street level, when you look up, you're going to see eighty percent of it, you're going to see the bottom side, which is the material side, which is beige, identical to what we have now. We are emulating or copying the shape and form that is on the building right now. We're not changing anything that way.
You're just changing the color, in your view, and...
Except the color.
And using a bright shiny material, as opposed to a muted...
It's actually a matte soft charcoal. It's not going to be metallic, it's not going to be glaring. The planning department came to me and said, "Oh, reflection on pedestrians or cars." And we had an engineer show some drawings that the reflection of the sun coming down, it'll actually reflect up. The windows in there now, it'll hit and go down. So it's actually an improvement over the reflective light. And I know the planning department has agreed, and, and that's a non-issue. But, the awnings are the ones that are going to show, and the bottom part, again, going to be a material or beige, and that's what you're going to see eighty percent of.
Other than the sample that you've placed up there, has the staff been able to take a look at what you're describing? Have they been able to see one of those panels that you're describing?
I, I, yes. They, they know what it is. I've sent them brochures. I did get a sample. I invited the council. I sent everybody letters. Please go take a look.
I'm talking about other than what is actually up there. Did you bring one into the, the planning staff so that they could take a look at it? Whether it's the, I don't, I don't expect that you would bring the full panel in. Those are pretty good size, but was there some smaller?
Well, I brought in brochures, which showed it. And I did get a panel, which we did put up there, and we invited them to come down, as well as the city council. We're not trying to hide anything from anybody. In fact, we're going out of our way to say, "Come on down and see how great this looks, and what a positive feature this will be."
Yeah, I, I appreciate the invitation. I did go down and see it. I think everybody did, sounds like. That's what I'm hearing here tonight, so. All right, thank you. I did have a question, Mr. Heer. In a, thank you. In a letter that was sent to Mr., an email that was sent to Mr. Sullivan from Brett Williams at Assemblymember Irwin's office, they reference a government code section 65850.5, point, parenz A, that talks about the intent of the legislature, that local agencies not adopt ordinances that create unreasonable barriers to the installation of solar energy systems, including but not limited to design review for aesthetic purposes. How do we reconcile this?
Great question, and the answer is, we actually analyzed that before we even went to planning commission. And you have to think of the general, that state policy is that they want to promote and encourage solar systems. And so, to that effect, they say that local agencies, including cities, are not to enact ordinances that create unreasonable barriers to that mandate. And in fact, we have ordinances on our books. Title eight, for example, of our code, talks about solar systems. And in fact, we follow those solar systems. And if it's a small project, for example, on top of a house, there's very specific procedures we have to follow. In this case, though, that section does not give a, any, any person a carte blanche to ignore policies that we have in place regarding our environmental or, or aesthetic views, such as our freeway corridor ordinance and policies that we have for that. Because to, to read it in, in a different way, to read it the way that the applicant would like us to read it, that would mean that any person, we can have no controls over solar, period. A person, if they wanted to build a project, for example, to build a three-story solar panel on their property, because they want to ensure that they can have enough power for their house, for their pool, for their structures, and also, their, their projects also to actually give, give energy back to the system, if you will, to Edison, for example, the way they would read that would be, we couldn't have any controls. And in fact, we looked at our policies very carefully to ensure that, and our, and our, our decision at the planning commission, and also the staff report, as mentioned, we have these very specific policies that we looked at to say, "We are going to give you every solar that we can unless it's in conflict with the policies that we have in place." And these were the two examples that we used that are in the staff report, were the reasons why we based it for the denial. Again, only for the awnings. He was approved for everything else, for this, for the rooftop, for other things. And we did bring the idea to him about the parking structure, but we never got any further than just a discussion.
I recommend you look on page five of the, of the 65850.5 government code, highlighted in the last paragraph. There's several. It says, "They make a finding based on substantial evidence that the solar energy system could have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety." And that's what's spelled out.
No, I, I understand it, Mr. Sullivan. I, I thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Heer, for answering the question. We do have a couple of other speakers. Ms. Bill de La Pena, you have a question?
I do. If it's not too much to ask, I'd like to see the slides again that show the before and after, because the pictures that we have are not very good copies and are not as clear, seemingly, as what we were seeing on television tonight. Is there a way to go back with a slideshow and show the before and after?
I'm sorry, you want...
The before and after slides?
I'm going to call a brief timeout.
Go. Roll forward.
It's with the panels on. That's a view from the street. Is that with it on right there?
Yeah, there were several that you had, from various different angles.
That's, I'm sorry?
You had several slides from different angles.
Yes.
Before and after, and this is probably the most visible one, correct? Can you show the others?
Well, the others, you have no view, because the street blocks it.
Can you show the others really quickly?
I'm sorry?
Can you show the others really quickly?
Well, of course.
Thanks.
The small building of the two has the most view from the street. And what's right next door to it, if you take a look at Westlake High and their billboard signs, this, you know...
This view is a view of Building B, the way it is currently.
I need you to speak into the microphone, so that it gets picked up by TOTV. Sorry.
This is the picture of Building B before. The awnings would go up, and this is what it would look like after the awning. So, before. Now, after. That's on the most visible one. That's Building B. Going to Building A, still, still the side view from Building B. So here is with it on. Here is it with it off. There's not a drastic change, but a subtle change. This is Building A, the way it looks currently, and then with the awning on it.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to have to take a brief break, and while I had hoped that I could get through this item, I have a plane to catch, so I have to leave. So I am going to recess for just a moment here, long enough for Ms. Bill de La Pena, our mayor pro tem, to take over my seat, and for the staff to, oh, you're going to stay in that seat.
Okay.
And just for the staff to do a few things with respect to our, our new system. So, thank you.
Good evening. We are resuming our council meeting. Mayor Price had to leave to catch a flight. We were talking about solar panels. Okay, so that was Case 9A, Appeal of Planning Commission Decision. It was a public hearing, and we were still in the middle of asking questions of the Are there any? So now we are turning over, we're turning it to the public speaking section of this public hearing. Our first speaker is, and I'm trying to see if I can see the names here, but for some reason, I can't. Okay, it's not giving me the names. David Crabill, followed by Nick Kidway. And when you approach the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, my name is David Crabill. I'm a resident of the city of Thousand Oaks and have been so engaged continuously for the last 40 years. Mr. Sullivan talked about his association with the Alliance, so I'm going to take a moment to do that, and then I'll be very brief. I've been chairman of the Board of the Alliance for the Arts, member of the Board of Governors, the Civic Arts Plaza Foundation, one of the early donors and fundraisers working out of the trailer across the street while this building was, was being built. Prior to that, it seems so long ago, it might have been in a former life, I was also an officer of the Westlake Joint Board of Homeowners Associations, so I'm familiar with the code color requirements, and it's one of the reasons I wanted to speak on this particular subject. I think the staff is taking an unnecessarily narrow view of the requirements, particularly in this case. In this case, we have panels proposed that are an integral part of the building, consistent with the decor of the building and, and the architecture of the, the building. It is not a bunch of shiny panels, as has been explained, this is charcoal. It is muted compared to the shiny panels. The painting on those awnings is actually misleading. If, if you've been out there to look at it, you, you see these panels are much, much lighter and muted in, in color. So, taking that into consideration, the concern here is whether or not, if someone has designed a project like this, that is so consistent with the design, that are they going to be discouraged in, in applying for, or providing for solar panels? If this type of thing is going to be declined, I think there's a bad precedent that would be set by doing this. I would also point out that it, it's in a discreet location, so it's not obvious up there. And this is not a bucket of paint. Somebody's not going out there and just painting a color that is offensive to our standards. This is equipment that has a, a social purpose to it, and is different. And as long as it is a design that is consistent with the decor and the architecture of the building, it seems to me that that should be taken into great consideration in applying our standards. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crabill. The next speaker is Nick Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Niberry Park, director of concerns, citizen of Thousand Oaks, honorable mayor pro tem, and council. A society is judged by how we treat our doers who make it happen. So disappointed with the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission, Planning Staff for the report that they have provided. I think it was Mr. Price who talked about having better pictures. Pictures only can do so much. I would like TOTV. To show this, this is on the Westlake grade. This is the senior housing that is going up. Picture doesn't do enough, but I think you have all seen that go up. I was there when it was approved, and I spoke in favor of it. But I never thought that this is where the building would be, and it would be so visible from the 101. So you folks are already missing a big chunk by not having videos to show, and maybe when you go out, you see the, what is happening, but the community certainly does not get the complete picture. I would like to, first of all, say that I have been in the industry, and so, all that has done is, I'm not in the industry anymore, so I'm not going to make a buck off this. But I do have a lot of education in solar, and one of the things I would like to say, I think I sent the email to Mr. Price, is that Elon Musk has already come up with tiles which have solar built in, and you cannot tell that it's a tile. It's not commercially feasible, but it's coming, coming out. And after the change to Mr. Trump, why did people vote for him? Not because, and they ignored his call that people like me should be deported, and my family should not be able to visit. I mean, such horrible things were said by him. But the reason so many people voted for him, and it's a trend in the country, is that, and that's one of the reasons I'm here, is that government is out of control. You have lost the big picture. Eighty percent of this thing will not be visible from the road. And I was saying, well, what if he cuts the, the trees, or the trees die from disease, then it would be available, would be seen from the city? Put that condition if you want to do it. I know he, I mean, a man of his reputation, and a man that stands for Thousand Oaks, he's not going to do that, but if you feel comfortable, do that. This disgusting thing that, well, how much of this is contributing to the whole project? This is the micromanaging from the days that the citizens are opposed to, and the business people are opposed to. He is putting his money where his mouth is, and he has the record for it. I mean, in this economy, I think the occupancy rate of his buildings is ninety-five percent or something like that. It's just phenomenal. He knows how to please the people, and if, and a good businessman like that, let's say he made a mistake, he will take care of it, and, like he said, in a first-class manner. What else do you want? Blood? I mean, it's absolutely disgusting. That's the letter from TOTV from Mr. Caruso, or his subordinate, with the logo. That was my letter. You won't see the picture or the logo. That's how the city mistreats citizens, in that if you send, send a document, they won't open it with the excuse that, well, it's, might have a, have a, have a virus. But then they won't print it in the proper manner, and it's in the end of the green packet so that nobody will, will read it. Mr. Caruso has no leg to stand on when he's paying a dollar a year for, for the thing. So, please, do justice and approve this, because this will do great for the country and will be a precedent for the rest of the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no more public speakers. We do, however, have eight written statement cards, all of which are in favor of this And we have support from people such as Sean Maradian, who is the president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, as well as Charles Cohen, among several others. Okay. If there are no further questions, I will close the hearing. So you do have question of staff? Okay, then would you please hit the button?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I wanted to just confirm with the city attorney, I think now's the time for the applicant to do rebuttal.
Oh, that's, questions of staff, yes. And then the rebuttal, and then I would close the hearing. Thank you. All right, now, okay, it's not working, but Mr. Adam would like to...
Thank you. Yes, I do have a couple of quick questions for Mr. Town. Number one, the word precedent-setting has come up this evening quite a bit, and to my knowledge, solar here in Thousand Oaks has been well-accepted, and the precedent has, in fact, to allow solar, and Town, correct me if I'm wrong, if you want to put it on your rooftop, you don't even need an entitlement to do it. Isn't that correct?
That's, that's correct. You only needed building permit.
All right. So, solar is well-established here in the city of Thousand Oaks, number one. Number two, the applicant brought out a lot of pictures of awnings around the city. Did you, do you find them to be comparable or analogous to the applicant's proposal?
Not necessarily. The, the examples, obviously, those are, those are good examples of awnings in the city, however, most of those are limited in scope, they're located often near building entrances. What we're talking about here is a much more extensive awning that is integrated with the building. Staff is not, not denying that. But it's much more extensive in scope, and that, that brings up the concept of a prominent feature. And staff felt that the, that the awnings and the mansared roof elements or the patio covers constituted a, a prominent component of the building's architecture. Many of the other examples, by the way, are also internally focused in terms of existing plazas, such as the Jan's Marketplace, and not externally focused, as this is, facing Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which is part of our scenic highways element system.
All right, so the awnings that we saw, in other words, what you're saying, were limited in size versus the proposal tonight, which was how many feet?
It, it's between approximately fourteen hundred and fifteen hundred linear feet.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Are there any other questions from any of the other council members? None? Then I will ask Mr. Sullivan to come back up. You have five minutes.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Pardon me?
If I could just clarify...
Oh, sure. Go ahead, Mr. Town. One moment, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes. If I could, just beg your indulgence for a moment. Just to clarify exactly what was approved at the Planning Commission hearing and what we have before us tonight, I apologize if there is any confusion on that. This is an image, if I could direct your attention to the PowerPoint that I showed. This is looking down on the top of, of Building A. So what the Planning Commission approved were all of these rooftop arrays, for instance, here, 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 and here. All of those are approved. The patio covers, the flat portion of the patio cover, first of all, the patio covers were approved, just as a structural enhancement, and then the solar panels on top, on the flat portion, the top of the mansared, of the patio covers were approved right here. What was not approved by the commission, and was also part of your decision tonight, are the edges, the mansared roof edges, this portion, for instance, of this patio cover. So that edge is part of what's before you tonight. This was all approved already. So if I could also then look in cross-section, again, Building A patio covers, the patio covers were approved, the solar on top of the patio covers was approved, on top of the building was approved, and tonight we're talking about the awnings, and then these mansared roof elements, this and this, for instance. So anyway, just to clarify that, there was also some discussion of the quote-unquote gap that I mentioned. What I was referring to, and it's shown on one of your, one of your full-size exhibits, it's Exhibit B3, B as in boy, that in, in the detail, showing the interface between the fascia and the mansared roofs, there's obviously a, a slight gap there as you look up, because you need the racking system underneath the solar panels. The solar panels will be, get this to work, be right there, of course, and then they are on top of a racking system, and that is attached to the fascia underneath. So there's a detail, like I said, on, on Exhibit B3, compiled by the applicant's architect, that shows that in more detail, but that was the, the concept there. And with that, I'm done, unless you had any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Doesn't appear to be any questions. Mr. Sullivan, go ahead, five minutes.
Thank you. I'm going to just take a minute or two, and then I'd like to have my architect take the microphone. If you take a look at the little brochures that I've passed out, or booklets, take a look on page one, is a sample of what some of the industry is doing. Page two shows solar panels on the front of the building. My own feeling, I don't like them at all. They don't, there's no continuity, they've got white frame, stainless steel frames, they're not butted together. Ours is going to be a finished product, and it will have no semblance to that. I'm just giving you a reference as to what is coming in our commercial industry. Turn to page three. That's a mock-up of what Malibu City is contemplating. It hasn't been approved, but that is, those are all solar panels, and they're doing a wave with solar panels. I don't like it, but that's Malibu. But what I'm trying to say is, they're using it on exterior buildings, and I think we are one of the first to do it this way, but I think it's going to be a big improvement. It should be a good, solid feature, and I'd like my architect to take a minute or two.
Sir, do we have your name and address?
Yes.
We do?
John Anthony Lewis, architect, and I live in Thousand Oaks.
Okay, then we may, we may need you to fill out a speaker card after your...
I already did.
Oh, we have one? Thank you. Go ahead.
I'd just like to address what I think is a major concern of everybody on the, the commission and the city council, the, the issue of whether these solar panels that are applied... issue of whether these solar panels that are applied to the awnings, the awnings have already been approved as a structure, as have the canopies, is, um, that it's going to be very obtrusive and very visible, including the support structure. That is not the case. What we are addressing is that for the canopies, we are looking to create a waterproof membrane through a, a subsystem below the, the actual solar panel, and racking, there would be a waterproof system that will be then caught in drains and led down through the posts in the structure. We can conceal any racking that might be shown from the edge by the fascia detail. That has not been fully resolved yet, because we haven't chosen a manufacturer. We have been trying to get approval in principle for this whole concept of the panels, and so it, it, we haven't completed all of our working drawings, all the construction documents. But I want to just say that these charcoal panels will have a matching frame, they are not highlighted in their module with the silver frame, they're charcoal on charcoal. There's a very fine silver line, which is part of the electric conductivity of the panel, but at a distance, it's barely visible. This is going to be considered more of a skin when you look at it than a structure on top of a structure. It's a surface that is sleek and continuous. We have made every effort to adhere to the architecture of the, that's existing with the cornice and the streamlined quality. We're enhancing that by the creation of these continuous awnings, which, by the way, only happen on the south and west faces of the building. I don't think that's been pointed out. And the fourteen-hundred square feet is, of course, not one long line, it's the combination of three, two levels of, of awnings, uh, in hundred-foot lengths, hundred-and-fifty, no more than that. But we are, we are doing everything we can to make this seem like an integral part of the building. It's an extra-structural, um, element that's concealed by beige softing and a beige or white fascia board, which is totally in keeping with the color. So at least half or more of what you see from the street level and approaching the building will all be within the color of the building now, which is in the beige earth tones. The, the top panel, which is charcoal, will be seen as you go further away from the, maybe over in the promenade, and you're looking across, you will see glimpses of that charcoal surface, but it's all in a continual flow, and we feel that it allows us to create a significant change in the, the enjoyment of the people in the building. We are allowing for reductions of solar gain on all the glass, because right now there are no overhangs, so there's, just like a lot of modern buildings, we, we deny the actual effects of weather and pump in more electricity and more air conditioning to manage. This does give us an awning effect, and it also gives us the bonus of electrical generation through the solar power.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I didn't get the name of the architect, sir, I apologize.
John, Mr. Lewis?
It's John Anthony Lewis.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, I, I don't know if you're the right guy to ask or not, but, um, I had, I have some reservations going in, but after your testimony, I have even more reservations, because what I thought I heard you say is, you haven't quite figured out how this is going to look. To boil it down, you're still looking at renderings, you're still looking at some engineering issues, um, and I, I don't know where the council's going on this, but my sense, based on the questions, is this all centers on how it's going to look. I think Mr. Sullivan's point's right on. I get it, it's not on the list, um, that's why, that's why there's a city council, not a planning commission, uh, because we aren't bound to what's on the list. What troubles me is, one, your representation that you're not going to see the charcoal finish. I walked around the building twice. I have to respectfully disagree. I don't know how that is a, how, I don't know how that is a possibility, looking at the building and walking around it. I understand what the testimony is, um, I don't know how you physically are going to see the underneath panels, but not the top of the panels, having walked around the buildings. Secondly, um, I don't have a clear picture on what this architecturally is actually going to look like, and since there's no renderings, I think that's a disadvantage to Mr. Sullivan, because I think this whole case base is, really hinges on, how's it really going to look? So from my perspective, um, you know, I'd like to see some renderings of what this thing actually looks like. The pictures that we have, they're not sufficient, and as Ms. Bill Lepenya pointed out, that's why she asked to go back and look at what the actual renderings are. But as I sit here tonight, I really have no idea what they're going to look like, but my gut tells me they may not look too good. So my question is, can you get, once you've figured out what this, you know, the mechanics of this, can you bring in an actual rendering of what the building is actually going to look like with these panels?
I, yes, the answer is yes, and I would like to address the fact that when I say that we haven't completed our drawings, it doesn't mean that we don't know how it's going to work. I said that we don't know what manufacturer are selecting, they all have different racking systems. What I was in, trying to infer was that we will conceal any racking, that what you will see is the solar panel, the skin itself...
We need to see, I, I don't want to interrupt, and I, and certainly, I, I've never met you, but I have known Mr. Sullivan for a long time, and I, I think, you know, his reputation, his community speaks for itself. Nevertheless, I think the council needs to see what the actual rendering looks like.
And we do have at least two perspectives that are photographic, that are in the slideshow, that maybe we could go back and visit.
There was nothing...
A close-up, there's a close-up which shows you...
I, I don't want to, it's really, respectfully, and I, you know, truly, it is not my intent to engage in a debate, I'm just sharing with you as one of four people that's going to vote on this. Thus far, while I've heard testimony tonight, to me, this hearing is, really hinges on, does it look good? Just speaking for myself, I really don't care if it's on the list, I really don't care if it's a precedent-setting issue, um, I think Mr. Sullivan's testimony tonight was, was right, is we need to be looking at, you know, this city is a big proponent of green buildings, of, of, uh, energy conservation, but we also have to strike a balance between, you know, classy architectural design, which Mr. Sullivan himself testified, some of the things that he's seen, he doesn't like. So, to me, this hearing tonight hinges on, does it look good? And it's unfortunate that, you know, um, five people are really in the position of deciding, does it look good? I'm never comfortable with that myself, but that's the, that's, that's what I find myself into. Right now, I have not seen an ender, a rendering of what the finished product looks like, and respectfully, by your own testimony tonight, you don't know either, or you haven't been provided to the council, I guess that's a better way to say it.
If I may...
Sure.
...go back to the slides, uh, we are going to duplicate what's there, and we have good slides that show you exactly what it's going to be, except it's going to be with a panel on the top instead of canvas. So if you'll allow us to go back and show you the slides...
Sure.
...you will see the...
And could I also just address that, when you walked around the building, you're looking at an awning that has no fascia, so the paint of the black, the charcoal black paint came down to the very edge, there's a fascia that's at least nine inches high, and then there's a soffit horizontally back, and that is all cream color. So there, you absolutely see that more than you see the top surface because of the way it's sloping away from your angle of view.
It was given to the planning department.
Okay.
So, again, that was all presented...
Again, we don't, we don't have that either.
We were, we presented that to the planning department very clearly in the beginning.
All right.
All right.
Can we show those slides?
Sure.
Uh, can you put that back up? Wait, right there. If you can back up one. Now, there's a good shot of the awning that is there. It's on a passi, passageway there, but that is the exact shape, that is the exact style that we're proposing. We're not changing anything. It would be very, very similar, almost, let's say, not similar, but identical to what you're seeing right there. We have those awnings around the building, there were many that were destroyed because of age and storms, and we took them down, uh, and we want to replace a lot of them with similar style, shape, but the difference is, we want to use the top as a solar panel and the bottom as a cloth or whatever the planning department...
Okay.
...and we agree on.
Mr. Sullivan, if you could, uh, could you, could you bring those pictures back up? Could you go to the, um, pictures, keep going, where you're basically not that one?
And you, you made a point of, will they be seen, the black? Yes, they will be seen. I don't think we ever said it will not be seen, but what we said was, the majority of it, you're going to see the bottom side of the panels, not the top, and you're going to have a small view from the street side of the black. It will be seen, of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're on the same page there. That wasn't, and again, I, I don't want to debate, but the, the testimony from the architect was, you're going to see, you know, the beige coloring, you won't see the charcoal black...
No, no, you will see the black.
Of course you will.
Of course.
Thank you.
Of course. But we have, uh, black windows in there, and this is going to complement it, and accent, and I don't think it's going to make a major change in the architecture of the building. I think it'll enhance the building. It's a very positive, very high-tech, contemporary look, and, uh, it's a win-win for everybody, because truthfully, without the awnings, it's going to probably kill, I'd say, two-thirds of the project.
Okay.
And we do have about fifty, sixty percent energy savings there. And if you want to know dollars, I'd be glad to tell you those.
That's okay. All right, Mr. Sullivan, thank you.
All right.
Mr. McCoy.
My question?
Okay, all right. I believe we have no further questions. Then, I think, thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. Any questions for staff? No questions, then I will close the public hearing and open it up for a council discussion.
Okay. Got it. Okay.
Mr. McCoy?
Mr. Sullivan, I really appreciate, um, the fact that you're pursuing solar panels, and, and also the idea that we're pursuing a green corridor as a city, and you're on the forefront of this. Um, I know there's questions on the aesthetic beauty of your proposal, um, and I also know too, with the, the planning commission, and also in relation to our guidelines for the city, that this is new territory for us. So, I, I'm, I'm much in favor of what you're doing. I do know that we need to have some stronger guidelines, I'd like to see more solar. I know the return on investment's difficult for a business owner, and that the more solar panels you have, the better off your building's going to be. So I, I, I like the idea, um, I'm moved by it, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. And, um, Mr. Adam?
Thank you. Well, Harry, I just definitely applaud the solar approach. You know, you've always been ahead of the game when it comes to sustainable buildings, uh, as evidenced by the last ten years, the different, the drought resistance that you've put in, you know, the artificial turf, um, and I, and I will say, as I mentioned, Mr. Town, solar's well-accepted here in Thousand Oaks. In fact, if you want to put it on a roof, you don't even need an entitlement, you can just put it up there. So we, we have no problem with solar. This really isn't a question of solar. This isn't what, isn't what this is about. This is really about going from an energy-saving device to an architectural feature, which has to be judged a little bit different, in my opinion. And when you judge it a little bit differently, and you look at what our architectural guidelines are, and you look at the surrounding area, when I was up in the building today, on the third floor, you know, you look out and you see the promenade, the North Ranch Mall, and all that, um, yeah, I just, I just question the compatibility with the surrounding area with what you're trying, trying to build. The surrounding area is, you know, architecturally-guidelined, fits in, it's stucco-type materials with, you know, classic shing, tile roofs, and, uh, and, and I just don't know about the compatibility with, with the surrounding area, and if you, if you look at it as a architectural feature, and you judge it along those guidelines, you know, it's on the primary building surface, and it, it, yeah, I, I, it just doesn't really fit with what those guidelines are. Uh, you know, we're talking about no metallic surfaces, we're talking about something that's, that's got an earth tone to it, and this just doesn't have that. And my, and my, my other concern is the execution of this project. You, you know, what I saw today was some black paint and a solar panel laying on top of it, and, and I, I just don't know if that's enough for me to, to be confident that that's what we're going to end up with. And the, the architect stated that he wasn't, at least if I heard him right, he wasn't quite sure how he was going to get to the point of what, you know, you say it's going to be in the end, and we don't have any real renderings to, to show that. I mean, one of the pictures you showed, you brought with us, shows solar panels sitting on racks, and I, I know that's not your intent, but I, I don't, I don't really see anything that convinces me that it's going to, it's going to look exactly what, like what you're saying. So I, yeah, I, I, I have some reservations about it, I guess I'll listen to what the other council members say.
Mr. Fox?
Uh, thank you, Madam, um, Mayor Potem. The council heard my comments. I think, you know, we need to make sure that if we were to move forward on this, we know exactly what we're approving, and I don't think, as we sit here today, we really do. So I'm inclined to actually ask for a continuance of this to a date certain. I think we need to compel the applicant to bring back very clear renderings of a finished product, no more guesswork, exactly what it looks like. I think the support of the city and the council with respect to green buildings, energy savings, solar, is well-documented. I think we applaud Mr. Sullivan for trying to, uh, actually expand that initiative and do it in a way that is architecturally-pleasing. There's no question about it, uh, Mr. Sullivan has, has, uh, he's not looking at cost efficiencies here, he wants to do what's right for his project. I just don't think council has enough information to, um, make a affirmative vote on what could be a precedent-setting issue, and that's really my concern, is if we were to move forward on this, in a sense, with incomplete information, we would be setting a precedent for other commercial buildings that may not be as responsible as Mr. Sullivan, and they may not have the same, um, uh, architectural features. Uh, I think we're on, you know, kind of uncertain ground here, so, uh, my sense is, we should continue this, we should require, uh, design renderings that are precise, um, very clear. I think staff can bring something back to a date certain, it's not the intent to unnecessarily prolong this hearing, um, but I think, Mr. Sullivan, you would probably be more interested in affirmative vote with the renderings than a negative vote without the renderings. And I think that's kind of where we're at tonight, is, I think if there's, if there's a hopeful for approval in precedent-setting, this council would be more inclined to do that with, with renderings that are, at least from my perspective and listening to Mr. Adam's comments, gives us a little higher level of confidence of exactly what we're approving. So I'm going to move to continue this. I'm going to move to continue this to a date certain, the staff have enough information on what we're looking for here, and then bring it back with, with precise renderings.
Uh, we do have a couple of, um, questions...
That's fine.
...Mr. Fox. Uh, Mr. Adam, followed by Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Yeah, I just have one other comment. The solar industry is evolving rapidly. Yeah, most of you have probably seen the solar tiles Tesla and SolarCity have put out. It hit... It hit the social media scene, it was pretty big. I'm not so sure that these big, black panels won't be obsolete in just a couple of years, and that there'll be a new way to gather solar energy that's more aesthetic, more appealing. And again, these Tesla, SolarCity tiles may not be available for another year or so, but I'm just thinking that, you know, there's going to be a better way to gather solar energy than these big, black panels that have been used now for decades. And I'm not so sure that this technology we're being presented with tonight isn't going to be obsolete in a relatively short amount of time. And again, I applaud the use of solar, it's great. But if we can get something that's a little more aesthetically-pleasing, a little more advanced in its application, that could be a win for everybody here. Just a thought, just an observation.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Mr. McCoy?
Mr. Sullivan, I'm in favor of your project, but I also know too, with my fellow council members, that the display that you presented to us for us to go visit at the location didn't, in my estimation, didn't do you any favors. It seems to me that what you've described tonight, apart from the live display that you set up for us, it looked so much different than what you're proposing. And seeing the work you do around town, I know the work you're going to do is going to be resplendent, but it would do us a world of good if we could have those drawings, that we would see the fascia, that it wouldn't be raised, that that would be clear for us, what the Planning Commission received, that your architect spoke of. I would prefer to see that, and that would be of great help to us to move forward. So, if we could have that, and as Councilman Fox said, to postpone until we have those.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. We do have a motion to continue this case, but I wanted to let you know what my perspective was, and that is that I was skeptical at the beginning of the hearing, and having heard and read from the Planning Commission hearing what transpired. But in seeing the pictures before and after, it really was a relief to see that the impact aesthetically would not be really as big as I thought it would be. So, if what we saw in the pictures before and after is something that you can reproduce with actual drawings and renderings that are true to all of the measurements and everything else, that is something that I can definitely approve and that I will support. But as long, or if we don't have all of the information that is needed, I would hesitate as well. The motion by Mr. Fox is exactly what I would have proposed as well, is not to deny the appeal, but to actually continue it, to give you additional time to come back to the city council with exact renderings and drawings, that it would include the rack and all of the other details that were to be figured out, along with a manufacturer, perhaps. Because I understand that there was no manufacturer yet that had been chosen. So, but aside from that, I applaud your effort for solar energy and using it in your buildings. You were a pioneer with artificial turf 10 years ago or so, when nobody had heard of it. You were the first one to install them at your properties for water conservation. So, you are a true pioneer when it comes to the environment, and I would support Mr. Fox's motion to continue this, to give you more time than come back.
May I have a moment?
I would have to reopen the hearing. Let me check with our city attorney.
Yes, because one of the things that I'd want to talk, hear from Mr. Sullivan about is his agreement whether to continue it or not, or whether he would request a vote. And if he did agree to a continuance, how much time him and his staff would need.
I just needed a minute or two.
Then I will reopen the hearing, so that you are able to make your comments. Go ahead.
All right. Two things. Mr. Fox, you asked for renderings. We tried to give you as close to actual as we could by painting the existing awnings and getting a sample of the actual product that we're putting on there and setting it on top of the awnings. That's not going to be the finished look, but that's as close as we could get. If you ask us to give you renderings, we are giving you a picture of what we are intending to do. I don't know how much more an artist would be able to create for you, if you're looking at the whole building, if you're looking at one portion. We actually are trying to give you a realistic picture by putting one actual panel there. We do know exactly what it's going to look like. We know exactly the racking. We know exactly the finish. There were some questions with planning, and we said, okay, we're okay with going back to planning for the undercover side, if you have a better choice or something that we can mutually agree on. But we know exactly what's going to go in there. We have the manufacturer, we have everything there, period. And we're trying to give you a picture of what it really is by putting that one panel up there. Again, we painted the rest of it to simulate. It's going to be a soft black charcoal, and it's going to be muted, it's going to be a finished product, and it's going to be very high-tech. I would love to hear what more can we do with a rendering than what we've got right now.
Let me make a suggestion. It's not uncommon for people to bring models in to the council, to say, this is what the model looks like.
Would you like us to bring the panel?
Well, I'm not going to tell you what to do, but I would suggest...
I'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, I would suggest bringing in a model with the brackets, okay?
The brackets are going to be, oh, you're talking about the outside bracket? Oh, yes.
What, a model with the brackets, with your fascia, in what the finished product would look like. I think council has enough pictures of the building to then extrapolate what that would look like in its entirety. So, a model of the actual panel with whatever brackets are going to be used to support it. It can be plastic, it doesn't have to be the actual deal.
Well, the brackets are all going to be hidden.
Okay, that's fine, okay? With the molding or whatever you're proposing and the actual colors. So, I think a model would be helpful. And then, if staff, if there are other renderings, other pictures that can be provided or produced, and working with conjunction with Mr. Sullivan, to give council a set of confidence that what we're approving aesthetically looks good, I think that's what we're looking for. The other thing I would point out, and this really is set aside, this is, we're moving into new territory here, this is more for the council. I think by continuing this item, if we were to approve this, it would allow Ms. Noonan and her staff to draft conditions that would apply for this project and would narrow the architectural use of solar panels. So, we are making sure that we're not approving something that's going to cause headaches down the road, and we don't have that tonight. So, I think there's value in this continuance, both from making sure that legally this project gets conditioned, so we don't have, you know, a problem down the road, and then also bringing in a model and some other renderings, so all of us can have a good sense that when the project is completed and the construction is up, as we drive past Westlake High School, we look up the building and we go, that was a good idea, that was a good thing, good for Harry, as opposed to, that was a mistake.
I'd like to add one thing. I have got on the line probably $400,000 to $500,000 invested in doing this. I would be rather remiss if I thought it was not going to be good. I've got a whole bunch of tenants, I've given you their endorsements. I have my next-door neighbor who has given an endorsement, and we're putting money on the line, and I've got a lot to lose if that is not good. I've got a whole building of tenants that would say, you know, this is junk, I don't want it. Every one of our projects we've ever done, we've done first-class. I'm probably the only landlord in the area that's got a million to a million and a half dollars of artwork sitting in all of our projects. I've got the horses that you see out in front. That was a $275,000 retail. I didn't pay that for it, because it was used. But that was a $275,000 piece of artwork that we got in the front of the building. We originally had planned a water element there. We saw that, and we got special permission to put it in. We do things right. We don't play games. I've got a lot at stake personally, meaning money, tenants. I'll tell you one more thing. The building, all through the recession area, up and down the street, there was 20% to 25% vacancy. We were 100% full, outside of somebody moving out for a month, and we had to paint or put some carpet in. And what we did is, we lowered our prices, we keep our properties up, and we do a good job, and I hope you have some faith. One of the things that I always do when I employ somebody, I say, what are your references? And I check them. You have references that I've done around Thousand Oaks. For example, four years ago, I bought a hotel. It was a dog. Most of the tenancy there was two hours by the hour, and the chief of police came over and said, Harry, best thing you ever did was buy the hotel. We put a few million dollars into it, we've renovated it, and it's really positive and it's going well. This is my reference. This is a good project. It will be a win-win, A, for the city, B, for myself, and mostly for the tenants, because they will get a reduction in their prices on electricity, and I feel really positive that, no matter what we do with a postponement, I would hate to get a rejection here, but I feel very confident that you should look at me and look at my references. I've got several hundred thousand feet of office space around, and every one of them is full. Every one of them has artwork. Every one of them is to the nth degree. I have a building that I bought from Jaffra on Townes Gate. I put in a two-story atrium lobby. I didn't need it, I put it in. I put an elevator in. It's not mandated that on a two-story building, existing, that you have to put an elevator in. I put an elevator in. I've done all of these things. You go to my office building, and we had the, on the second floor, wooden slats on the railing. They were six inches on centers. I know better than that. It cost me $175,000. I put wrought iron in, and I made them four inches on center, because that's what the code is. We upgraded all the bathrooms, we put artwork in. We do these things in a wonderful, wonderful manner.
Mr. Sullivan, if I may interrupt?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we are running out of time. But usually, when the Planning Commission makes decisions or the council makes decisions, we base them on actual evidence, seeing a sample, or seeing a rendering with exact measurements as to what, whatever we are asked to approve would look like. And we don't have that here tonight, we have photo simulations.
We did put it up on the building, and we invited everybody to come down and look at it.
So, what you have on the building looked like it wasn't sitting on any rack or anything, it's just flat.
Yes, there were racks underneath the awnings.
Okay. All right. This probably wouldn't take, I'm not sure how time-sensitive this is, if it is time-sensitive, but if you could come back with a model, a sample of what it looks like, pictures as a sample, showing us the solar panel on other buildings, so that we can have an idea as to what it would look like?
I'll be glad to build it.
Or laying out more of them on the awnings, perhaps that would be helpful.
Yeah, but you have to, if we can't do the awnings, we wouldn't buy them.
No, no. If you can reproduce whatever you showed here tonight in the photo simulations, as I said, I don't have a problem with that.
I'll bring the actual panel down, so you can see it firsthand.
Okay.
What else would you like to?
I just want to make sure staff has a clear direction on how to work with Mr. Sullivan, on what is needed to provide information for the city council.
Okay. For me, if it's, I don't want to do something that's going to be cost-prohibitive, but, Mark, if we could construct a model, it could be out of, you know, paper mache and plastic for a while here, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at a visual aspect of, but I think it would be helpful if the actual panel was brought in. They're not that big, all right? And with whatever exterior or cover-up, there's going to be whatever apparatus that will be used to mount the panels, a finished product. That's what I think would be helpful. And then, you know, we do have some pictures here. Apparently, they're not enough for the council to feel comfortable in approving this, but a lot more detail, I mean, the fact is, and Mr. Sullivan, and, you know, we go back a long way, this isn't about you, and it's not about your reputation. You do class projects, but tonight, we don't have enough detail. Having sat through, you know, hundreds of meetings, both as a commissioner and a council meeting, tonight, we don't have enough detail to approve this. And we've got a lot of former planning commissioners here. I think if we have the detail, we're in a much better position to grant the approval. Just to remind you, this was denied at the planning commissions, would be overruling the planning commission decision. As we sit here tonight, it's not on the list. You, I think correctly articulated, a litany of reasons why this would be disapproved. I think the council was poised to actually go against that, but we just want to make sure that the architectural design is consistent with what, you know, looks good. And right now, we don't have that detail. It's not a reflection on you. I think it's more a reflection on the materials that were presented tonight. So, you know, Mark, are you good on what we need here?
No, I understand the, your direction, that's fine.
Mr. Sullivan, would a potential date of coming back, January 24th, be okay with you?
When?
January 24th.
I'd like to do it in two weeks, frankly. We're really looking to get it done, and everything's been on hold for that. I would like to get it done ASAP.
I'm good with that. I don't know if, it's really incumbent upon your team that they, in two weeks, they can put together a model and a design to make this happen. Leave it up to staff, but I'm... I mean, we're coming up to Thanksgiving, and we're...
Well, the other meeting would be January 10th, that's a little sooner, because we're only looking at the panel and not much. It shouldn't be a very long hearing at all.
We have a very full agenda on the 10th.
Yeah, Mayor Protem.
Okay, we're talking about 10, 15 minutes?
What's that?
Having him come back on the 10th?
Yeah, we, I mean, I think it's just going to be a question of what the model looks like, what the renderings are.
Correct, correct. Should not be a long hearing.
I don't think we need to have a whole, full-blown hearing.
No, we won't.
Okay. I'm happy to work if the applicant feels like the 10th of January would work with their schedule in terms of getting everything needed. We will manage the agenda accordingly.
Okay. I'll continue this item to January 10th.
I will have to close the hearing then again. And now, Mr. Fox, you can just restate the motion.
All right. I move we continue the hearing until January 10th, at which time, the applicant in working with staff will provide a model of what the solar panels will look like, and any additional architectural renderings in their finished state, to provide council better clarity on what the final product as built will look like from an aesthetic viewpoint. The other thing is, at that meeting, the city attorney will provide, if the council were to approve the appeal, whatever language we would need in the conditions to make sure that they were consistent with the city's architectural design policies. Does that work? Okay.
Good, thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
We waited since June now, so...
So, we're going to go ahead and vote now? Please vote.
The motion carries 4-0.
Okay, we will see you again then, January 10th, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you. We now have our next item, which is wastewater and water connection charge annual adjustments. Mrs. Rodriguez?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 9B regarding wastewater and water connection charge annual adjustments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. At this time, we do not have any speaker cards. At this time, we do not have any speaker cards.
Thank you, and the presentation will be made by our Public Works Director, Jay Spurgeon. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, thanks. This is, as noted, an annual adjustment to water and wastewater connection charges. These charges essentially represent a buy-in to the existing water and wastewater infrastructure systems for new development. Each December, these increases are approved or brought before council, the new rates are effective in January. So for this past year, the construction index change was 1.6%, so these charges are increased by that percentage, that equals about $125 per connection. Water and wastewater connection charges are each about $8,000. If there's any further questions about this item, be happy to take those from council.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon, other questions for Mr. Spurgeon? None, okay. We don't have any speakers for this, as was stated. All right. I believe I need to close the hearing of this item as well, so the hearing is closed. Council discussion and/or a motion. I'm waiting for someone to hit the button.
I did.
There we go. Now, Al Adam was first, sorry.
All right, yeah, I do move that we adjust the rates per the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. All right, please vote.
That motion carries 4-0, and I have two ordinance titles for you. Ordinance Adjusting and Setting Rates, Fees, and Discharge Limits of City Wastewater Division Uncodified and Ordinance Adjusting and Setting Rates and Fees of City Water Division Uncodified.
Thank you, item 10 is our Sports Facilities Endowment Fund for the year 2016-17. Madam Clerk, do you need to introduce that, or should I just go straight to the chair?
Straight to the chair.
All right, and the presentation will be made by Committee Chair Margaret Ambrose. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. The Community Funding Review Committee met in October. We reviewed the seven sports facility grant applications, and we are recommending that city council approve the funding of all seven applicants in the amount of $71,140. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, any questions? I do have a question. The grants that are listed from Westlake High School seems to be a similar grant from the year before, is that, that's not the same grant, this is a new grant for that similar amount?
Yes, it's a new grant, yes.
All right, just wanted to make sure, all right. We do have public speaker cards.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Brian McQueeney, I live in Thousand Oaks. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Ride On Therapeutic Horsemanship, one of the programs that submitted an application this evening. I really just wanted to take this opportunity to give you a two-and-a-half-minute update as to what's going on at Ride On right now. We just finished celebrating 15 years of service, teaching individuals with disabilities, mental and physical disabilities, children and adults, how to ride a horse. We also provide physical, occupational, and speech therapy. We're one of the only ones, we are the only one in LA or Ventura County that provides this unique therapy that uses the movement of the horse to improve physical conditions. Currently, we have two operations in the San Fernando Valley and one here in Newbury Park, operated in partnership with Canal Recreation and Park District. They've been a great partner, they showed enormous vision in inviting a small nonprofit into this community to provide this service. And just as you saw with this great building and the CO Arts Plaza, this is a, these public nonprofit partnerships can really provide enormous benefits. We will, in a few months, surpass 100,000 lessons given in our 22-year history. Last year, we gave 8,000 lessons and therapy treatments to about 100 children and adults every week. We have had over 100,000 hours of volunteer community service donated to our program. And this is all about educating the future, educating our teenagers who come into our community to help us. You may have heard, a year ago, we, Ride On was selected to manage the Special Olympics World Games equestrian competition. Just recently, Ride On, the U.S. Equestrian Federation named Ride On one of four Centers of Para-Equestrian Dressage Excellence. This is the way that the U.S. is going to build the next generation of international competitors. They've identified four sites in the country that will be centers of training and excellence. Ride On is one of those four centers, and we are the only one on the West Coast. We have some extraordinary things going on here, right in our own community. We have an amazing, talented group of individuals who come every week to do this. So your support of all recreational opportunities with the sports facility grant is much appreciated. I do want to tell you, the way I came to be involved in this was by coming out and seeing it. So I know, if you haven't been out to see our program, we're there Tuesday through Saturday in Newbury Park, just five minutes from here. We'd love to see you or any of the residents out here anytime and see for yourself exactly what's going on in your own backyard. That's all I have, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. McQueeney, your program indeed is a remarkable one, thank you for all the hard work that you've put into it.
Thank you.
All right, then we have Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, Assistant Attorney at Newbury Park, Director Concerned City of Thousand Oaks. Honorable Mayor Protam and Council, I sent an email about this earlier this morning. It is part of the green packet, however, I don't know why, but the logo was removed, even though, I have the wrong phone number here, but still is, I don't know why that is being done. The other problem is that I did copy the staff person, Janet Covell, and asked for a reply, and as usual, I mean, the problem with the city and government in general is the arrogance to not respond to any comments, and even here, I mean, people see it all the time, is that questions are raised by me or others, but they just go into a bottomless pit, and it's not enough to just allow people to speak, which the Constitution allows, the flag is still there. But the whole point is to have not a dialogue, but get an answer, and it is really strange, very strange, that the report that is in your packet has no reference, there's one line that says that it was from a committee. But it is pretty sad that committee people give their time, that their names are not mentioned, that it's not mentioned, in fact, the minutes are not accurate. So I spent some time on the last meeting, October 18th, two, I believe, new members took oath, and that's what the minutes say, but there's no name of who they were, I know Barbara Sponso is one of them, but the minutes should be accurate. And what is going on over here, I mean, this is slack work, I mean, we just had Mr. Selvin, who does first-class work, and we expect the city council and the city government to do first-class work, and there is, it says that there will be meetings on October 24th and 25th, but I see no minutes of them, and we are on November 15th. So what happened to those meetings, they were held or not held, if they were held, where are the minutes? I mean, the whole system seems to be screwed up, I mean, to be honest with you, your website, I mean, I used to praise it and use it, but now it's a boondoggle, and it's not improving. I mean, and we are spending thousands of dollars, Mr. Powers, under your leadership, so hopefully you will look into this. What happened to the legitimate concern of the previous city manager, Mr. Scott Mitnick, that the scope of the project, which you asked about, the Westlake baseball, was completely changed? As one who has been on the Social Services Funding Committee and doled out several million dollars and was trained by the city about the scope of the projects, and Ms. Ambrose was part of the committee, we would like to know if there's any hanky-panky going on, because I don't think there's any hanky-panky going on, and it was unfair to remove the city manager on this little flimsy thing that happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm going to move approval of the committee's report. I do want to just take a moment, for those that are watching at home, the responsibility for school facilities rests, obviously, with the school district, and they're an independent elected board of directors. For many, many years now, the city has put together this Sports Endowment Fund, where we actually point, it used to be a council committee years ago, but we changed that to a citizens committee that looks at the requests, and then they take $100,000 out of our budget and they make, review the requests to come in from the different sports programs and schools, high schools, middle schools, even elementary, and then they award these funds. And this year, I just, you know, want to cover a little bit, because for the benefit of the public, we're giving $20,000 to the Westlake High School baseball boosters for artificial turf for the varsity, junior varsity baseball fields. Ride On Therapeutic, $20,000 to renovate the equestrian ring. Newbury Park High School, $11,500 to upgrade the scoreboard in the pool area. Lorena High School, $6,000 for a strength and conditioning facility. Thousand Oaks High School, we're providing $5,400 to the renovation of the field events for the track and field, and that not just benefits the students and athletes at Thousand Oaks High School, but also TO flyers. So kids from five years old to all the way up to right beginning of high school, every Saturday during track season, they use that facility as well. Newbury Park baseball boosters, wind screens for the varsity outfield, and then finally, Los Cerritos, $3,500 bucks to purchase installation of hydration areas for PE. The list goes on and on, it's a total of $1.3 million. And the reason I bring that out for the public is, there are few cities in the country and the state that provide this level of support for school districts. And it's in large measure because of the fiscal conservative management of the city's budget that we're able to provide these funds. And I know that school district really looks to the city and the park district in partnerships, but sometimes we report, we do these reports, we vote on them, and the public really is not aware of both the level of support and the type of programs and facilities that simply would not get done, they would not get done because of the funding for the school district if they didn't partner with the city and have the support of the city. So I just wanted to point that out, it's after the election, so this isn't a political statement, but it's just really more of a public service thing that I think, you know, we're all certainly proud of, and our kids get the benefit of these facilities. So with that, I'll move approval, and as always, great job by the committee. You know, many, many years ago, I thought it was a good idea to have the people to actually use and participate in these programs, make recommendations to the council, rather than have two people in the city council go through all these. You guys always do a great job, so I appreciate it.
And if I may add to that, I think it is very important to point out that it is a citizen committee that makes the decisions, completely unbiased, neutral, objective, no agenda, no axe to grind, nothing, and I think it cannot be any purer than how this process works. So thank you for all of the work that you, Margaret, and your committee members, fellow committee members do in order to provide much-needed services to our schools and community. All right, any other questions regarding the motion or comments? None, then please vote.
That motion passes 4-0.
Thank you, I believe this was our last item. We will now go to our interim city manager, Andrew Powers, for follow-up items or announcements.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is on Tuesday, the 6th of December. Currently, we have three items of significance coming forward on that evening. We have an annual report from the Investment Review Committee, we have our Community Enhancement Grant Award, so another grant award set of recommendations, and we'll have a public hearing that will be an urgency ordinance related to the passage of Prop 64, and we have some cleanup to do in our ordinance as a result of the passage of Prop 64 that legalized marijuana. So that item will be coming forward for cleanup, and that will be the first action taken as it relates to Prop 64. We'll be scheduling a subsequent study session for council on next steps relating to that in the first quarter of next year. Also want to mention to everyone at home that our State of the City Address is coming up on Tuesday, the 13th, and registration is open now for that event through the Chamber of Commerce, and we'll have our reorganization meeting that evening as well, beginning at 6:30 PM. That's all.
Thank you. Now to our city attorney, Tracy Noonan.
Thank you, we have one closed session tonight, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, Griselda Castro versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number 56, 2013 00432039 pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.98. It's not likely I'll have anything to report.
Thank you so much. This is our last meeting in November, we won't see you until December, so have a wonderful and very happy Thanksgiving. Good night.